The Leominster City Council meeting is funded in part by DeCarolus Insurance Agency at
Petition 76, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the City of Leominster to revise ordinance Chapter 16 personnel, Article 11 Personnel Wage and Salary Plan, Division 3 Classification Plan, Section 16-34, Classification of Positions be amended effective July 1, 2020, by deleting in its entirety from the table. First, I'll read the class title, then the classification, Purchasing Agent S8, Nurse, Public Health S5, Code Enforcement Inspector S6, Plumbing Inspector S7, City Treasurer/Collector Assistant S5, and inserting in their place the following. Purchasing Agent S10, Nurse, Public Health S7, Code Enforcement Inspector 7, Plumbing Inspector S8, City Treasurer/Collector Assistant S6, and by also inserting a new class title in classification as follows, Business Development Coordinator S7. We did get some correspondence from the Mayor's Office. The letter dated April 26, 2021, addressed to the City Council. I'll read this, Dear Members of the City Council regarding Communication P76, I respectfully request to move the purchasing agent's pay level from the S9 designation to the S10 designation beginning in fiscal year 2022, i.e. July 1, 2021. The City Ordinance lists the purchasing agent's position as being an S8, but Mr. Chaplaine is actually being paid at the S9 designation. In 2015, I moved the purchasing agent's pay level to the S9 designation via the budget process after Mr. Chaplaine had spent approximately 10 years, i.e. 2005 to 2015, at the S8 designation. It was a pay increase, I believe, was justified for the work level the position entailed at that time, along with the knowledge level and requisite training and certification required of the purchasing agent. I believe it is to move the purchasing agent to the S10 designation to reflect a level of pay commensurate with the ever-increasing workload his office faces, in addition to other duties Mr. Chaplaine oversees on behalf of the city and its various departments. Other cities similar in size to Leominster function with multi-step purchasing departments. While here in Leominster, Mr. Chaplaine carries the full weight of the city's purchasing duties, including those of the school department, solely on his own. Mr. Chaplaine oversees many small-scale building projects each year for various city departments who do not have the background to handle such tasks. He also assists in the Controller's Office when the Controller is out of the office. As the city continues to take on more and more projects, Mr. Chaplaine's workload has continued to increase over the last several years, with the legal compliance aspect of his position also continuing to increase in complexity as the purchasing laws continue to evolve. I do not foresee his workload diminishing and the state training and certification requirements have continued to increase in recent years. Mr. Chaplaine holds the MCPPO certification, i.e. Massachusetts Certified Public Purchasing Mr. Chaplaine has decades of experience with the city and his extensive purchasing background has proven invaluable to city operations as he continues to assist city departments in navigating all of their purchasing needs, ensuring that the city stays in compliance with all such laws. I believe Mr. Chaplaine should be moved to the S10 pay level to properly reflect what is required of his position and all of the duties he faithfully executes for the city. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact my office anytime. Sincerely, Dean J. Mazzarella. There was also an additional letter, also created April 26, 2021, addressed to the City Council. This letter serves as a follow-up to the Mayor's Letter dated April 8, 2021, with regard to the City of Leominster Classification of Positions Amendment effective July 1, 2021. The following positions were reclassified during union negotiations with Local Union 39, Laborers International Union of North America. Nurse, Public Health S5 to S6 in 2015, S6 to S7 in 2018, Plumbing Inspector S7 to S8 in 2015, Code Enforcement Inspector S6 to S7 in 2018, City Treasurer/Collector Assistant S5 to S6 in 2018, Business Development Coordinator S6 to S7 in 2018. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact my office anytime. Sincerely, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. And so, we also got an email from Wendy Hurley, who gave us a job description for the Business Development Coordinator, and also gave us a list of City Hall Union versus non-union current classifications. She indicates that the City Hall Union was decertified on March 9, 2021, and I have listed those "union" positions for informational purposes only. They are no longer any City Hall staff included in a union. Any questions? I'm sorry, if you notice any discrepancies, please let me know, and I will update. So, having read the submissions, I'll first inquire if there's anybody on the line who wishes to speak for petition or in this matter.
Evening, Councillors. Greg Chaplaine. I have no comments on the petition. I just want to make it known that I'm on the call in case you have any questions for me as to how part of this petition does affect me. So, I am here if you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chaplaine. I appreciate that. Do you know, is there anyone else on the line speaking on behalf of this petition or advocating for this petition on behalf of the Mayor?
Yes, it's me, Wendy Hurley, HR Director.
Oh, okay. Hi, Wendy.
Hi. If you have any questions-
Yeah, before I do that, do you want to give us a quick overview as to why this is being presented and, you know, what the administration is hoping to accomplish with this?
The Controller brought it to my attention that the ordinance needed to be updated with the most recent classifications listed from the union staff. So, as we went through the ordinance, we found that these were the positions that needed to be updated, and so we just put them together. And I also got word that you wanted, somebody wanted to see the Business Coordinator job description, so I submitted that.
Okay. Thank you.
One more thing. These updates, only some of these union positions were changed for classification updates. Those were brought forth by the union, so those were the only ones that they brought forth to look into and have reclassified during union negotiations. That's why there's only a couple of them.
Okay. Let me ask you, are there any City Hall employees that are being left out of this reclassification? And if so, what's the reason for that?
The positions that were reclassified that we are bringing forward to you today were already reclassified during union negotiations, and those were people that were in the union. The only City Hall employee right now that was reclassified is the purchasing agent, which I was made aware of just last month.
So, I mean, is it fair to say that what this petition is seeking to do is formalize what's already in place, as well as seek some increases in step level? Is that the sum and substance of it?
Yeah, I would really defer to the Mayor for that answer. As far as, I do want to mention also that I did have a conversation with the Mayor, and I did move forward to get some quotes for a classification and compensation study, and I did have a quote, but then COVID hit, and so the project was put on the back burner. And now with the decertification of the union, the Mayor did give me the okay to move forward with a compensation and classification update, but I'd have to get another quote now because I need to now add in all of the union positions that are no longer union, and I want to add them into the grouping. So, I'm going to need to get another quote.
All right. I mean, is this, is your need to get another quote, is that going to affect us moving forward on this petition?
No.
Okay. And why not?
Right now, the only classification that needs to be changed would be the purchasing agent as far as compensation goes. All of the other, the other classifications have taken place already.
All right. So, I get what's going on. Okay. Let me go to the other members of Legal Affairs first for any questions or comments. Counselor Shalapo Zephyr, any questions or comments?
Yes, thank you, Counselor Nibroski. I guess I'm just, I'm very confused. So, the City Hall Union was decertified when?
In February.
This year, 2021?
Of 2021, and the contract runs out June 30.
Okay. So, all of these positions were previously union positions, and as part of the decertification process and agreement, they were taken out of the union and are being increased. Is that right?
Well, they were already increased as budgets. These changes are being made just to reflect the ordinance, which hasn't been updated.
Right. The ordinance has not been updated. What about, I am still confused, but I have another question about the Business Development Coordinator, because that job, I'm looking in the ordinance book, and that job doesn't exist in the Section 1634.
Yeah. Well, I looked into that, and it has been, we have an employee that's been in that position for a number of years, and, well, I shouldn't say a number of years, probably like five, I think it's five or six years. And I asked the Mayor's Office if someone else had that position previous to her, and they said it's always been around, and they don't know why it was not put into the ordinance. So, that was another position that I wanted to add in there because it was not previously.
I don't, you know what? I don't remember ever having a Business Development Coordinator. We had an Economic Development Coordinator, which is in the ordinance book, is an S7, but I don't ever remember, and I've been around for a while, having a Business Development Coordinator. So, I guess I'm just confused.
And I did have a claim of an employee, I hope to get back to you with that, who had that position, because I did look into that. It may have been, I'm wondering if it was called something else, but I'm not sure, so I can look into that.
I think it might have, no, Wendy, I think it was. I think we, the city used to have an Economic Development Coordinator, which is in the ordinance, and the Economic Development Coordinator is an S7. Is there currently an Economic Development Coordinator in the city?
Yes, there is.
That title?
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right. That's what I thought. Okay, then, you know, still confused. So, this Business Development Coordinator does not exist in the ordinance book?
Correct.
And, okay, so part of this petition wants to add it to the book, even though somebody's been in that job for several years?
Yes.
Okay. But that's all I have right now, Counselor Nibroski, but I might have other questions.
Okay. Thank you. Before I move on to Counselor Cormier, I just, Wendy, I just want to make sure, I want to try to summarize in case other councilors are confused. City Hall, there was a, there was a union for the City Hall employees.
Correct.
When that union was active, there were certain step increases that were agreed to with various City Hall employees, correct?
Yes, correct.
And then the union decertified. So, what this petition is doing is it's bringing the ordinance current with what was agreed to with the union as far as those employees, and at the same time, the Mayor is seeking a further step increase for the purchasing agent, which I'd say the Mayor is classifying in his letter as well-deserved, and we're also seeking to formalize the Business Development Coordinator position. Is that, is that pretty much what's going on?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Counselor Cormier, do you have any questions or comments?
Well, I certainly understand, you know, after the explanation, what this petition is doing. I understand that. I guess my question is, because I'm sure there's probably a lot of people wondering, is there going to be any, I kind of touched on it, Wendy, they're going to be, you're cutting in and out as well, are there going to be any other reviews of anybody else in the building at any point in time? Should we expect other petitions like this, or, you know, where do we stand with that?
Now, this, there shouldn't be any more petitions like this right now, but like I mentioned previously, the Mayor has given me the go-ahead to further update the quote that I received on a compensation and classification study, and I would like to get moving on that. Then, after that is completed, we may have some updates.
Okay. All right. Okay. No, I'm good for now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Cormier? Yes, Counselor Zephyr, go ahead.
Yep, thank you. So, I just wanted to be clear. It's not just a change in classification from an S8 to an S10 for the purchasing agent. There are four other positions, the Nurse, Public Health, Code Enforcement Inspector, Plumbing Inspector, and City Treasurer/Collector Assistant. All of those are being reclassified to higher F categories as well. It's one, two, it's five in total. And my question for Ms. Hurley is, do these employees represent all of the positions that were in the union that was decertified?
Yes.
Yes. So, this is, so these are all of them. So, there aren't any other positions in City Hall that used to be in the union and are not now?
No. There's no more union at the City Hall.
Right. No, 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 I understand that. So, there's no more union in City Hall. So, my question is, the five, the five positions that we're considering here are all in the union that no longer exist, correct? And my question is, how many other positions within City Hall used to be in the union and are no longer in the union because the union's been decertified?
Oh, okay. Twelve. There's twelve other positions. I gave you-
Oh, there's twelve?
There's twelve positions that were in the union that are no longer in the union. I did present a chart. I don't know if you have that.
I don't. I didn't get, I know Counselor Nibroski was reading from something that he got from you. I didn't have that material. I don't, I think, I've asked the clerk to send it to me, so hopefully I'll have it. But I didn't see that, and I did not see, I didn't see the chart either.
Okay. There were those positions that were also removed, however, the changes were only made to those five that needed to be-
Okay, so there were twelve total that were in the union, all of them are no longer in the union because the union's been decertified, and we have five that we are considering tonight out of those twelve, and we're looking at just these five to give them, to reclassify them to higher F classification. So, there were seven people that used to be in that union that are not being addressed here, correct?
That's correct.
Seven positions. Okay, thank you. I need to just clear that up. Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is Greg Chaplaine. Counselor Zephyr, if I may, just in case there's some confusion to add to what Ms. Hurley is saying, because I'm not sure listening if it's quite clear. Well, first of all, the purchasing agent position was never in the union, so my position was not. All the others were. I'm the only position as part of this petition that would actually be getting an increase one step, as the Mayor's Letter said. The ordinance shows me as an S8. I'm actually an S9 right now. The other positions, they're already at pay rate. You pass this position, there is no realist, in reality, no increase in pay for them. They are already at these pay rates, at these pay levels. Petition is only to update ordinance to reflect what is actually exists, excuse me, in reality currently. During the life of the, that's what Ms. Hurley was talking about, during the life of the union, they negotiate for these specific positions to go up to these current classifications, which the Mayor did agree to.
Right. No, we-
They're already at that pay.
Yeah, I think we understand that. Thank you, Mr. Chaplaine.
Okay. I don't know if that was clear at all.
Let me, let me move on. Are there any other councilors that wish to have any questions or have any comments at this time?
This is Counselor Ardinger.
Counselor Ardinger, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. I'm a little confused. Is this Business Development Coordinator replacing the Economic Development Coordinator, or will there be two positions, one for each?
Well, there is one for each, and this is two positions.
Okay. All right. But this is a position that is already in existence, has just never been formally recognized.
That is correct. It's been in existence for over the years.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other councilors?
Counselor Nibroski, this is Counselor Frida.
Counselor Frida, go ahead.
All right. First of all, let me start with strong support for the purchasing agent increase. I have worked closely with Greg Chaplaine on numerous building projects, and that's just added work that he has, that he does so incredibly well. I mean, every question that we have at the table, he has an answer for, and we're working diligently on the police station right now, and he's just such a resource. It's incredible. And we all know that when we come down to our council meetings, when we're in person, very rarely is that office closed. He's still in there when we watch in for our meeting. So, I just want to offer strong support for that position. I mean, are we not allowed to say that the name of the Business Development Coordinator, so everybody understands what we're doing? Can we not say the name?
No, I think you can say the name.
I mean, is this, Wendy, is this Melissa Tasker's position?
Yes, it is.
Okay. That would have simplified a lot. I mean, we know who the Economic Development Coordinator is. Now, we know who this is. So, you're formalizing Melissa Tasker's position?
Correct.
Basically. Okay. All right. I support these, this whole exercise, and I get it. What I don't get, though, is some of the, some morale in City Hall is not going to be very good, as far as I would think, with some of the other positions not even being looked at. When you look at, and correct me if I'm wrong, Wendy, somebody like, and I'll throw out Master Benrazzi, because he's been out straight with this whole COVID thing for how long, he's not part of this equation and is, I don't want to say being overlooked, but for whatever reason, you know, not in line for any type of an increase. And the same goes with our assistant clerk, even though she's new, that position could be elevated. So, there are, there's a lot of work to be done with the employees in City Hall. I don't see the equity issue with some people that have been working hard in their positions, or most people working hard in their positions, that don't have, they're at the top step. I mean, Maribel in the clerk's office, I mean, she's, she has been through how many, how many elections and working all crazy hours? I mean, I don't know if there's an easy way to be equitable to all the other employees, but, and I know that's what you're trying to get to, and the Mayor just gave the petition to look at that, but we really need to look at a lot of these positions because it's just not, not there in my book. I don't know if I'm, if I'm reading this wrong or I'm interpreting this wrong, but I just see a lot of people that I think are at their top step that have nowhere to go, and we're not helping them get there. So, you know, that's, that's just my concern for the other employees in City Hall. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor Frida. Is there any other counselor that has any questions or comments before I go to the public? Okay, hearing none. Is there any member of the public on the line that wishes to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, is there any member of the public on the line that wishes to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Third and final time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council either in favor of or against this petition? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to bring this back into Subcommittee real quick. I view this petition as largely a housecleaning petition. I agree with a lot of what Counselor Frida said about the other employees, and I'm happy that the Human Resources Director has been given the green light to start exploring that terrain. But I- Um, but I, I'm in favor, I'm in favor of this petition personally. I, I do concur that the purchasing, um, i- is, is an extremely hardworking, dedicated individual, and, and I, I agree with the mayor's sentiments, um, in his letter to us. Uh, so my position would be to grant this, uh, when we go into full session. Uh, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, your thoughts?
Um, I'm going to support it as well. Um, I do agree, I, um, you know, concur with statements that have been made about the purchasing agent. We all know how hard Mr. Chaplin works, and he really is a one-person operation, pretty much, uh, downstairs and purchasing. So I fully support that. I am concerned about, um, you know, the morale at City Hall. I am, you know, hopeful that, um, that Ms. Hurley will look at, you know, the rest of those positions and make sure, or bring a proposal forward that will, um, help provide equity to all of those positions, because, you know, fairness and equity is, um, is very, very important for people. So, um, I will support this, uh, this evening. And I, I appreciate, um, you know, the, the, um, the explanation, because it was just, um, I was confused, and I hadn't seen Ms. Hurley's information, so I finally did get that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr. Uh, Counselor Cormier, your thoughts?
Yeah, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I think you stole the word right out of my mouth. It's, it's exactly what I was going to say. We're, we're, it's housekeeping. Um, you know, these positions are already there through bargaining, um, and, and making it reflect what they're actually being paid. So I, I definitely, you know, am in full support of this, and, you know, certainly I, I, I'm in full support of any kind of a, you know, additional review, um, just so that everybody can, you know, know that their position has been reviewed, and, and, you know, the, should get an explanation, um, as to why, um, you know, they, um, why they wouldn't be elevated, or, or why they would be, either way. You know, I, I think that's been, um, something that's long overdue, and I like to hear that. But in terms of this particular petition, I totally agree. It's just housekeeping, so I'm in full support of it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. President, I think, I think with that, um, we're, uh, I'm inclined to close the public hearing.
Sounds like a appropriate measure.
You checked with the public, Mr. Chairman?
I, I think you did, didn't you, Mr. Chairman?
I, I did. I checked with the public three times.
I, I, I didn't hear. I'm sorry. Thank you.
It's okay. Okay, so you're going to declare the public hearing closed, Mr. Chairman?
I am, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Um, I note it is six fifty-eight, and we have, uh, our next item of business is a six thirty public hearing. Um, I suppose we'll, um, just wait a couple of minutes, and then we'll open the meeting, and then we'll recess.
That's fine.
Is Ms. Chabuski with us?
She is. She's on the line.
Hello?
She is. She's on the line.
Okay.
Sorry, I forgot the number.
Is there anyone else joining us for the, uh, for seventy dash twenty-one besides the conservation commission agent?
Um, it'll just be me tonight.
Okay, very well. We'll get started in just a little bit.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. I still, my iPhone still says six fifty-nine.
Not yet.
Okay, I have seven o'clock now. If you could all rise and join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag to the United States of America.
Of America.
And to the republic.
Republic.
For which it stands.
For which it stands.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
Liberty.
Liberty.
And justice.
Liberty.
For all.
For all.
Okay, I'll take the roll, uh, call of the councils in attendance, starting with Counselor Frida.
Present.
Counselor Dombrowski.
Present.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Present.
I'll note, uh, Counselor Feckley's absence. Counselor Angelini.
Present.
Counselor, uh, Arndinger.
Present.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Counselor David Cormier.
Present.
And I shall be recorded as present. We have eight counselors present. Um, and I am going to, we, I did ask the senior member of the council, in the absence of the vice president, to review the minutes of our March twenty-second, April twelfth, and April twenty-sixth meeting. Counselor Frida, do you have an opportunity to do that?
Uh, I did, and we just have a couple of minor, um, amend, adjustments. So, um, I think with that, I can work with the clerk. Um, so I would, um, I would say they're acceptable, and they can go on file.
Okay, that may be done. Um, before I ask for a motion to recess, I think it might be appropriate at this point, given the passing of, uh, Comptroller, to ask for a moment of silence at this juncture in his, uh, memory, uh, for, uh, Co- Comptroller, uh, John Richard. Thank you very much. Um, at this juncture, I would entertain a motion to go into recess.
So moved.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor Frida?
Uh, well, we have an opportunity at the end of the meeting, maybe say a couple of words about, uh, Mr. Richard.
I think that would be appropriate, Counselor, and, and a, and a very good idea. We will do that.
Okay.
All right. Um, okay, so we have a motion to go into recess by Counselor Arndinger. Do we have a second?
I'll move to second.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, seconding. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are in recess, and we are now on, uh, the public hearing with, uh, relative to seventy dash twenty-one. Is the chairman ready to proceed?
I am, Mr. President. Petition seventy dash twenty-one, this is a public before the Lemister City Council. Angela Chabuski, conservation agent, request to amend chapter twenty-one of the revised ordinances entitled Water and Sewers, Article Six, Stormwater and Erosion Control Regulations and Stormwater Ordinance, by inserting new definitions and updating the language as attached. Um, I did communicate with the city clerk, and unfortunately, I do need to read, um, these changes. Uh, so I'm going to do that now as quickly as I can, and then I'll go to, um, the conservation agent, uh, right after that. So, um, the first change would be, um, to chapter twenty-one, section twenty-one dash seventy-six, entitled Definitions, uh, would be, is hereby amended by inserting the following new definition after the definition of reconstruction and before the definition of runoff. Redevelopment. Any construction, land alteration, or improvement of impervious surfaces resulting in total earth disturbances equal to or greater than one acre, or activities that are part of a larger common plan of development disturbing greater than one acre that does not meet the definition of new development. Uh, and also, by amending chapter twenty-one, section tw- twenty-one dash seventy-nine, entitled Administration and Permitting Process, uh, the proposed amendment is to insert the following new section F after the section E, quote, Stormwater Management Permit Application and Approval Process, and before section G, Actions by the Stormwater Authority. This would read, A, Property Drainage Regulation. Number one, no owner of any land easement right-of-way home or building shall allow water discharging from their property to flow onto any abiding property, private or public, sidewalk, public property, or public right-of-way that will cause detriment and/or cause a nuisance. Groundwater, rainwater, surface water runoff shall be controlled within the proper property boundaries of the land where it is generated, or it may be discharged into a DPW-approved drainage structure, swale, or water butt. This could require filing with the Conservation Commission if the work is proposed within one hundred feet of a wetman resource area, or within two hundred feet of a stream, brook, or river. Number two, if any landowner or owners agree to allow water from another property passed onto or through their property, a legal easement shall be created and recorded with the deed of each of the involved properties. These documents shall be submitted to the city for our records. Number three, some pumps and foundation drains may be connected to the municipal stormwater drainage system if a proposed plan is submitted to the DPW for review, which is then approved. This is the preferred method of directing water away from a property. Number four, no discharge of groundwater from rain gutter collection water, surface water runoff, foundation drains, or other drain shall be connected to the municipal sanitary sewage system. Number five, failure to comply with this ordinance can result in the issuing of non-criminal disposition tickets. The fine for the first offense is one hundred dollars, the fine for the second offense is two hundred dollars, and the fines for the third and any subsequent offense is three hundred dollars. Each day of non-compliance is considered a new and separate offense. Number six, this shall be enforced and administered by all DPW building, conservation, and health department personnel. Uh, the petition also seeks to amend the regulations entitled Stormwater and Erosion Control Regulations. Um, they want, uh, what the petition is seeking to do is to amend section two, which is entitled Definitions, by inserting the following new definition after the definition of municipal separate storm sewer system, MS four, or municipal storm drainage, drain system, and before the definition of non-point source. New development. Any construction activities or land alteration resulting in total earth disturbances equal to or greater than one acre, or activities that are part of a larger common plan of development disturbing greater than one acre on an area that has not previously been developed to include impervious cover. The petition also seeks to amend section two, entitled Definitions, by inserting the following new definition after the definition of reconstruction and before the definition of runoff. Redevelopment. Any construction, land alteration, or improvement of impervious surfaces resulting in total earth disturbances equal to or greater than one acre, or activities that are part of a larger common plan of, of development disturbing greater than one acre that does not meet the definition of new development. I don't know why that, that's in here twice, but it is. Um, also amending section J, entitled Project Completion with the addition of the text below. At completion of the project, the permit, permatee shall provide a statement of compliance, including an evaluation of the low-impact development site planning and design strategies used on site, and shall submit both a hard copy and an electronic copy of as-built record drawings and an updated operation and maintenance plan, noting any changes in new responsible parties. As-built record drawings shall include all structural stormwater BMPs, drainage structures, conveyances, outfalls, catch basins, curving, and headwalls, and shall be stamped by a registered professional engineer or registered landscaper. Computer disk shall be submitted with the as-built record drawings in digital CAD format, In addition to the as-built, the permit, permatee shall submit evidence of a long-term operation and maintenance plan. This evidence may be presented in a maintenance contract or annual certification documenting the work that, the work has, that has been done over the last twelve months to properly operate and maintain the stormwater control measures. Petition is also seeking to amend section seven A, entitled Performance Standards, Stormwater Management Design and Performance Criteria, by inserting the following new criteria, number two through four, after one, starting with, quote, "At a minimum, all projects subject to a SMP shall comply with the performance standards of the most recent version of the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Standards and accompanying Stormwater Management Handbook, as well as the criteria contained therein. Additional requirements are noted below and before the criteria number five, titled as Landscape Design." Number two, stormwater management systems on new development shall be designed to meet an average annual pollutant removal equivalent to ninety percent of the average annual load of total suspended solids related to the total post-construction impervious area on the site, and sixty percent of the average annual load of total phosphorus related to the total post-construction impervious surface area on the site ten. Number three, A, annual, A, I'm sorry, average annual pollutant removal requirements are achieved through one of the following methods. Number one, installing BMPs that meet the pollutant removal percentages based on calculations developed consistent with EPA Region One BMP accounting and tracking tool, or other BMP performance evaluation tool provided by EPA Region One where available. If EPA Region One tools do not address the planned or installed BMP performance, then any federally or state-approved BMP design guidance or performance standards, AG eight, Stormwater Handbook, and Design Guidance manuals, may be used to calculate BMP performance. Or, number two, retaining the volume of runoff equivalent to or greater than one inch multiplied by the total post-construction impervious surface area on the new development site. Or three, meeting a combination of retention and treatment that achieves the above standards. Or four, utilizing off-site mitigation that meets the above standard within the same USGS HUC twelve as the new development site. Whatever the hell that means. Number four, stormwater management systems on redevelopment sites shall be designed to meet an average annual pollutant removal equivalent to eighty percent of the average annual post-construction load of total suspended solids related to the total post-construction impervious area on the site, and fifty percent of the average annual load of total phosphorus related to the total post-construction impervious, impervious surface area on the site. A, average annual pollutant removal requirements above are achieve, are achieved through one of the following methods. Number one, installing BMPs that meet the pollutant removal percentages based on calculations developed consistent with EPA Region One's BMP accounting and tracking tool, or other BMP performance evaluation tool, provided by EPA Region One where available. If EPA Region One tools do not address the planned or installed BMP performance, then any federally or state-approved BMP design guidance or performance standards, for example, state stormwater handbooks and design guidance manuals, may be used to calculate BMP performance. Or two, retaining the volume of runoff equivalent to or greater than- equivalent to or greater than .8 inch multiplied by the total post-construction impervious surface area on the redeveloped site, or three, meeting a combination of retention and treatment that achieves the above standards, or four, utilizing off-site mitigation that meets the above standard within the same USGS HUC 12 as the redevelopment site. B, redevelopment activities are exclusively limited to maintenance and improvement of existing roadways, including widening less than a single lane, adding shoulders, correcting substandard intersections, improving existing drainage systems, and repaving projects shall improve existing conditions unless infeasible and are exempt from Section Seven A four. Roadway widening or improvements that increase the amount of impervous- impervious area on the redevelopment site by greater than or equal to a single lane width shall meet the requirements. The proposed petition also seeks to amend Section Seven A entitled Performance Standards: Stormwater Management Design and Performance Criteria by inserting the following new criteria numbered six after five, titled as Landscape Design, and before the criteria numbered seven, titled as Erosion and Sediment Control Design and Performance Criteria. The amended language reads as follows. Number six, low-impact development site planning and design criteria must be implemented unless infeasible to reduce the discharge of stormwater from development sites. Uh, the proposed petition also seeks to amend Section Seven A titled Performance Standards: Stormwater Management and Design and Performance Criteria, number seven, beginning with Erosion and Sediment Control Design and Performance Criteria, Bullet B, by inserting the words, quote, "and include," end quote, after three and before the following. The proposed petition also seeks to amend Section Seven A titled, quote, "Performance Standards: Stormwater Management and Design and Performance Criteria," end quote. Number seven, titled Erosion and Sediment Control Design and Performance Criteria, Bullet B, by inserting the following after the numeral two and before Section Eight, titled Waves. Two, stabilization site where projects are completed or temporarily ceased. Three, protect slopes on construction site. Four, protect all storms, drain inlets, and armor, all newly constructed outlets. Five, use perimeter controls at the site. Six, stabilize construction site entrances and exits to prevent off-site tracking. Seven, control waste that could be discharged, including but not limited to discarded building materials, concrete truck watchout, chemicals, litter, and sanitary waste. Eight, inspection schedule for erosion controls. The, uh, the proposed amendment finally also seeks to amend Section Thirteen, titled Perpetual Inspection and Maintenance, by inserting the following in Section B, titled Maintenance Inspection, after numeral two before numeral four. The read, number three, the owner of the property shall sign the operation maintenance plan. Um, that's, uh, that's a summary of the proposed changes that are being sought by this petition. Um, Mr. President, I note that any audience we may have had, I think we've lost.
Yes, of course.
But having said that, um, uh, Ms. Chabuski, if you could just introduce yourself for those members of the public that, um, don't, don't necessarily know who you are, and, uh, if you could give us a summary, um, I'm, I'm interested in why this is being presented to the council for approval and where, um, exactly you got the, um, language from. Uh, so the floor is yours.
Hi, this is, um, Angela Chabuski. I'm the Conservation Agent for the City of Leominster, obviously. Um, and I want to say, uh, I do apologize for all the reading you had to do, and I really appreciate you guys taking the time to consider this. Um, basically, I was approached by the other members of the Stormwater Committee, um, the DPW, the Health Department, the Planning Board, because as part of our MS4 permit that we contribute to, um, and our, we're in permit year two, we have to amend and adapt our language and our ordinances and regulations. Some of the language was, you know, it's changed twice because we have the Erosion Control Regulations, but we also have our Stormwater Ordinance. So, for example, the definitions had to be changed in both of those sections, um, as well as the, I, I apologize, my son's yelling in the background, I'm sorry. Um, um, as well as the section about the discharging stormwater from other properties. That was actually written by, um, the Health Department Director, Christopher Knuth. Um, as DPW and the Health Department had many issues in the past couple of years with properties discharging onto other properties, um, causing unsafe conditions as well as health hazards, and it's something that we feel as regulatory authority in the Stormwater Committee that we need to address.
Okay, um, so again, where did, where did the language for these definitions come from?
I apologize, um, that was provided to us from the state, from the EPA. They sent out a large email with the mandatory changes that every MS4 community had to make to their ordinances, um, to make sure that they are in line with their guidelines.
Okay, so these would be, these, so our, our ordinance is going to be consistent with, um, the state's revisions as well?
Yes.
Okay, um, okay, I'm gonna, um, turn this over to other members of Legal Affairs for any questions or comments they may have. Um, I would, uh, Angela, note, you know, just want to thank you for all your hard work, not only on this petition, but also on the, uh, the floodplain, um, petition that we recently passed. Um, Counselor Shalaflo Zephyr, uh, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, no, I actually don't, uh, Counselor DeBroski, um, you asked, and I was curious about, um, was this bringing us into line with state regulations? And, uh, Mr. Busky answered that, as well as the language, so I'm fine at this point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Zephyr. Um, Counselor Cormier, how about yourself?
Yes, I, I do, thank you very much. Um, right in the, um, the first one, uh, amending Chapter Twenty-One, um, Water and Sewers, um, if you look on the second page, item number six, this shall be enforced and administered by all DPW Building, Conservation, and Health Department personnel. I'm just wondering if maybe it would be possible to change that, to say that this shall be, this shall be enforced by all DPW Building, Conservation, and Health Department personnel and administered by, and I, I'm just thinking that it should be administered by one person or one agency. Um, otherwise, you could have 50 people thinking that the next person is, is going to lead the charge, or, I, I, I just think that everybody has a responsibility to enforce it, and, you know, by way of notifying the proper person or, you know, persons, maybe a couple of people at most, and then one person or one department should, um, administer it.
I think, I'll, um, Counselor Cormier, I'll, I'll defer to the Conservation Agent, um, but just in my own practical experience, I, I think that what ends, what ends up happening is depending on the project, um, depends on what departments are involved and what departments are not involved. So, it, it, it's, it sort of needs to, um, tie over to everybody, but, but, um, Ms. Chabuski, if you could maybe answer that question better than, better than I did.
Oh, I think, I think you answered it perfectly. Um, so obviously, the way that these, the stormwater regulations and permitting works is that sometimes the DPW will get a stormwater permit that I won't see. Um, typically, they do contact me anyways just to discuss, because I spend a lot of time out in the field and I'll see things and call them up if I notice an erosion control failing, as well as they do the same for me. Um, but if someone's filing a conservation permit, then they don't file a stormwater permit with the DPW, and sometimes if someone's filing a building permit, they don't know to go to DPW or my office, um, to go through the stormwater permitting process, and so that's where they actually are handed the stormwater application for the DPW, or they are redirected to my department, um, to start the permit process for us. So, it is helpful for us to have all these, it does seem confusing, but it actually really does work out well for us to have everyone kind of working their own angle for the enforcement administration. Um, even with the Health Department, their agency, they were dealing with, um, some issues where someone's sump pump was flooding a street, causing it to freeze and isovert, and they were able to enforce that and have that remedied, um, rather quickly.
Okay, so, so it, it does make sense then? I, I, I guess I, you know, it just, to me, it just kind of, it seemed a little, um, a little vague, you know? And, I mean, all DPW, I mean, that's, I mean, how many people work for the DPW, you know? Um, I, I, I'm just thinking that someone in each department, you know, should be responsible for it? I, I, I don't know. I, I understand where you're coming from. I definitely understand where you're coming from, but it just seems like too vague, and, and, uh, you know, I just want to make sure that somebody in each department is, is, you know, leading the charge and taking responsibility for it.
Uh, if I may, we, you know, for example, with my department, obviously, it's just me, I take charge of all the stormwater, um, and I guide the commission through it, and for DPW, Mark Pimmerini and John Roseberry and Sean Como, they kind of balance it out between them, but this also gives the foreman, um, the ability to, if they see someone discharging their pool, um, in, directly into a catch basin, and they can stop and they can say, hey, you know, please, you know, you can't do this, and they can explain the regulations to them, as well as, um, for example, Chris Knuth or Marka Van Graas, they're going down the road and they see something, they have the ability to stop and say, hey, you please, this is part of the city's stormwater regulations, this is a violation, you need to stop. Um, and some, I know in some larger communities, they, they do have a stormwater enforcement agent and fully one position, um, but it would be, I do believe it'd be a little too much for one person to handle on their own.
Okay, no, I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine with it. Thank you very much. That was my only question I can think of, though. Thank you.
And thank you, Counselor Cormier. Uh, do any other counselors have any questions or comments, um, for the Conservation Agent?
Counselor, Counselor Angelini?
Uh, yes, Counselor Angelini, go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Ms. Chabuski. Can you hear me?
Good evening. Uh, yeah, sorry, I keep muting because my kids are screaming in the background, sorry.
All right, no problem. Good evening, thank you for joining us this evening. Um, okay, so this is all, um, part of the MS4 Phase Two Stormwater, um, Regulations. Um, and I guess, I, my first question is, is this, the city and the state, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, are also subject to these laws? They would be subject to these, uh, this regulation change?
Correct.
Okay. Now, I know that EPA, um, has just upgraded the SWPP, uh, and those notices were intended due, I think, May fifteenth, so coming up very, very quickly, and that, obviously, for those folks, uh, the SWPP stands for Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plans. So those would deal more or less with larger industrial or commercial builds, such as malls or, or large industrial, uh, developments. But, uh, can I, I just want to give an example and see if perhaps you can tell me how this, this situation would be handled. Uh, example A, um, due to a lack of drainage on a, uh, accepted roadway, um, a private property owner is inundated with sheet flow runoff, and that runoff crosses his property or her property onto the land of an abutting piece of property. Would, would the, would the recipient, the first recipient be responsible for mitigating that, uh, runoff?
I just want to make sure I understand the que- the question correctly. The, the runoff is coming from one property across an accepted street through the stormwater system into another property.
Oh, uh, beginning on the accepted roadway, due to a lack, due to a lack of drainage. Let's just, just say there's no closed drainage system or no drainage system on the roadway. And, uh, during a, during a storm event, water is entering private property from the roadway, and that water in turn flows across the first property owner's, um, land onto an abutting piece of property. Would the, would the, would the recipient of the sheet flow be responsible for preventing that from entering the abutting property?
So from my understanding, and I'm, I don't typically, this would be a very good question for DPW, but from my understanding, the person who would be responsible would be the city, because we would not be allowed to discharge our stormwater onto someone else's property without, um, an easement, according to the proposed amendment from Mr. Knuth.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you for that. Um, I'd like to, um, quickly just state that I, I do really like the, uh, proposal, um, to allow sump pumps to be discharged into the, uh, city's system. Um, if we're going to try to prevent people from discharging onto roadways and creating hazardous situations in the wintertime, I think that that's a, a wonderful idea to give them an option, um, uh, to legitimately discharge it into the, uh, city's drainage system. Um, and lastly, uh, let's see. Uh, no discharge of groundwater from, okay, no, I actually, I think, I think that's it for me. I appreciate your time, and, um, I will pose that question to, uh, perhaps John Roseberry at DPW and see if I can get, uh, a little more clarity on that. But thank you very much.
Thank you very much as well.
Thank you, Counselor Angelini. Any other, any other city counselors have any questions or comments before I go to the public?
Counselor DeBroski, this is Counselor Frida.
Counselor Frida, go ahead.
Okay, um, Angela, how are you?
I'm doing well, how are you?
It's good. Just a, a couple of things, and, um, it, it kind of answers, uh, the question that Counselor Angelini just mentioned, uh, because my daughter's worked on this to do the same for the state in her job. So, it, it is a requirement of the state as well, as you said. Um, and I kind of compared notes with her, obviously, because she, that's her position, as you know, and, uh, there are a couple of things that she, she thought should be inserted, and I tend to agree with her. Uh, on the very first, uh, first section under number one, uh, the very last, uh, line, um, Conservation Commission, if the work is proposed within 100 feet of a wetland resource area or within 200 feet of a stream, brook, or river, um, there should be, uh, the word perennial put in there, uh, 200 feet of a perennial stream, brook, or river. Do you agree with that?
Yes, I do, now that, now that you say, I do see that.
Oh, okay, um, so we can, we can just address that. And, um, and, and number three, that, that was also a point that, uh, the Ward Four Counselor just brought up as well, uh, with the discharges, but I think it's, it's really important that you have in here, um, and it's pretty clear that the, the plans have to be submitted to the DPW, so that's going to be the only way that we're going to be able to, uh, prevent any illicit discharging, um, for them to be able to look at it closely. Um, I just had a couple of others here, too. Um, on, we go to the next section where, um, retaining the volume of runoff equivalent to or greater than one inch multiplied by the total post-construction impervious surface area on the new development site, um, what the state- What the state is, I don't know if the state has done it, but what the suggestion was, and I think they did, to increase that one inch to one and a half inches, just to be prepared for potential climate change consideration. Do you know where I am on that?
Yes, I do. I did take these directly from the paperwork that was sent over from the state for the MS4 permit, but I can propose this to the stormwater committee and see if they'd be agreeable to it.
I think this was more recent with all the updates for climate change. Everybody's looking at trying to be more prepared down the road. I think that's why the discussion was a one, one and a half or 1.5. That was the... And the only other section was going towards the end, next to the last, where it changes to the owner of the property shall sign the operations and maintenance plan. And I know this is a major issue that every one of us has had to deal with, as well as the planning board and you, or the Conservation Commission in the past. The operations and maintenance plan signed by the property owners. We know that homeowners associations, developers really like to do homeowners associations that are going to be responsible for the basins, and nine times out of 10, nobody takes care of them. So the city has to step in, or it's worse, no one steps in and it's not fixed and they don't work. So it's, it's an area. One of the things that would be a suggestion would be to insert somewhere in there that before the planning board would issue any occupancy permit, that the developer would have to sign off on those permits. So that, you know, somebody other than the city would be responsible for those as they're, as they're being built.
I just, with that, I feel my eyes might terrify. So that would be basically the developer saying that, you know, they would take ownership, basically, so the city wouldn't get, you know, have to step in.
Yeah. If they have, if they propose the homeowners association and, and everybody says, "Yeah, that's great, you know, new, new section, everybody's going to take care of it," and then nobody takes care of it, and the developer is gone. Oh, I mean, if, if they have to sign off on it and have some responsibility of the homeowners assoc... If there is a homeowners association and they don't do it, then there's got to be a follow-up somewhere before it gets to the city being responsible.
Thank you, Frida. Thank you so much for that, Counselor Frida. I do agree with that one. I've not, I'm fairly new to ordinances and writing ordinances and going over them, so I'm not sure if the stormwater committee can actually make a change to an ordinance or regulation that the planning board would enforce. I can look into that.
Yeah, okay. All right. And that, that was the only thing as far as, as far as this actual proposal. I mean, it really is a job well done, certainly deserve credit for that. And I know the committee worked hard on that. Roger and I have talked about this on many occasions. He goes back and forth with my daughter on a lot of, a lot of the issues at the state level. So I know he was involved in this as well. But, and you know, the other thing that I know many communities are looking at down the road, and it's going to be, it's going to be a real major issue, but I don't know how anybody's going to deal with it, but I think it cost-wise, you know, using, I think, one of the ordinances on the salt for the roads, I think there's got to be some kind of alternative coming up because that's starting to affect drinking water. So I think there's got to be some alternatives used, and, you know, they're there, but they're expensive. So I think a lot of that's going to be looked at in our near future, but that doesn't certainly affect this proposal right now. But that's, that's something I think we all need to be thinking about. But thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Frida. Any other councilors have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to go to the public. Are there any members of the public on the line that wish to address the council, either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, are there any members of the public on the line that wish to address the council, either in favor of or against this petition? Third and final time, are there any members of the public on the line that wish to address the council, either in favor of or against this petition? Okay, seeing none. Before I bring this into subcommittee, Angela, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, there you are, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. I, I think Counselor Frida had made, made some good points. But rather than, it seems to me that the more prudent way to handle this would be to go forward with this tonight. And if you could investigate those points made by Counselor Frida, and if there is a need to amend later, to submit an amendment, and we, and we can make the changes after. Does that, does that course make sense to you?
Yes, it does. It seems like it'd be a lot easier and a lot quicker for reading it in.
Yeah. And I think, and I think, too, that that'll give you an opportunity to run the points raised by Counselor Frida. Because, you know, we want this to be consistent with, with, with what the state is advocating. So, all right, so that, I think that sounds like a good plan. So I'm obviously in favor of this. I, I think it's, it's necessary. Very thankful that the conservation agent and the other department heads are paying attention to business and getting this stuff done. Counselor Cormier, I'm sorry, Counselor Shalaposeffer, do you, are you in agreement with that?
I am, yes.
Okay. And Counselor Cormier?
Yes, I also agree.
Okay. And Counselor Frida, you understand what I'm, what I'm proposing as well, correct?
Absolutely. And Angela knows Kelly, so, you know, she can, to get it more clear than I probably presented it. Angela and Kelly can have a conversation.
Yeah, and I think that's a lot smoother way to do it. Okay, so, Mr. President, at this point, I would, I believe we will have an unanimous recommendation from Legal Affairs to grant this petition, and at this point, we can close the public hearing.
Okay, so you'll declare the public hearing closed.
Thank you.
All right, very well, counselor. We'll move on to the Public Service Committee. Counselor Frida, you prepared to commence with 63-21?
I am, if our national electric, National Grid representative is still, still awake and with us. Rebecca, I'm sure you're still here.
Yes, I'm here.
Thanks for, for being patient. 63-21, Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid, request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Queens Road, Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid, to install one single ohm pole on Queens Road, beginning at a point approximately 30 feet east of the center line of the intersection of Elm Street, and continuing approximately 24 feet in the north direction. Install one subpole with anchor to support an existing pole line due to the residence of 40 Queen Road, removing a tree that has an existing guide wire installed in it. Rebecca, I'm going to go to you to, to give us a summary of, of the work that's, that's being done. I've driven by there, but I'd like to have you give us an overview.
Sure. There seems to be a pole, a tree that is being taken down on 40 Queens Road, so right now, there is a guy wire to the tree. So in order to maintain the proper tension on Pole 4, we would have to put a subpole across and guy it to take place of the tree.
Okay. It seemed pretty simple. I'm not, I'm, there's nothing more complicated than that, correct?
Yes, yes, nothing.
Pretty straightforward. Okay. All right. With, with that, let me go to Counselor Dombrowski, I believe, and Counselor Cormier on public, on public service.
I'm all, I'm all, Counselor Frida.
Counselor would be Counselor Feckley, right? Counselor Cormier?
I'm sorry, I thought it was Counselor Cormier. I apologize, I don't have any further.
It's okay.
Okay. Is there any other councilor that has any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll now go to the public. Is there anyone that's on the line that wishes to speak in favor or against 63-21? For a second time, is there anybody who wishes to support or speak against 63-21? For the third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to 63-21? Hearing none, Mr. President, I'll declare the public hearing closed.
Very well, counselor. We'll now move on to 64-21.
64-21, Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid, request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. White Street, National Grid, to install one single ohm pole on White Street, beginning at a point approximately 290 feet south of the center line of the intersection of Ridgewood Drive, and continuing approximately 15 feet in an east direction. Install new pole number six with anchor to serve MBTA meter pole. Again, Rebecca, I will go to you for that as well.
Sure. From my understanding, the MBTA wants to install a pole 135 feet from Pole 5 to run a power, run power to the gate, the gatehouse down the track and put a meter on it.
Okay. Are we removing any poles there?
Nope, nope. We're just installing it to run the gatehouse.
Okay. All right. Okay. Counselor Dombrowski, do you have any comments on that?
It's Counselor Pauline Cormier, and of course, Counselor Feckley's absent, so you just have Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
All right, I'm going to try, I'll get it right the third time. Counselor Cormier, do you have any comment?
Thank you for including me. No, I have no comments.
Okay. Any other councilors have any comment? If not, let me go to the public. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in support to 64-21? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support to 64-21? For the third time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support to 64-21? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to 64-21? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to 64-21? For the third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to 64-21? Mr. President, hearing none, I declare the public hearing closed.
Very well. Thank you, counselor. And we'll move on to 65-21. You've got a busy night, counselor.
65-21, Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid, request permission to excavate the public highways and to run and maintain underground electric conduits together with sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary for the transmission of electricity. Set underground conduits to be located substantially in accordance with the plan filed here with Mark Hamilton Street, Lummester, Mass., the following of the streets and highways referred to, Plan Number 25301479, Hamilton Street. Install conduit from MH number 5385 on Main Street to MH 5384 on Hamilton Street. Install conduit from MH 5384 on Hamilton Street to riser pole 44 on Hamilton Street. Install conduit from MH 5384 to riser pole 66 on Main Street. Rebecca, you're on again.
All right. So there's already an existing Pole 6. They want to install a manhole on Hamilton Street to a riser pole, Pole 44, and then again at Pole 66. So they, and then they would install the conduit from one manhole to the riser poles.
Okay. And in conjunction with some of these others, are they all going to be digging, excavating at the same time? You know? I mean, and I know we're getting to the...
I think they're going to start at one location and then move down, down the road. I'm not 100% sure which one they're starting at. I, from what I understood, this was already brought and they passed it in front of the city council, but they had to revise a bunch of things that didn't work in the manholes. They were, it didn't work, so they had to change things up a little bit. So I guess it's pretty much the same thing.
All right. I did drive by there, and I know, I noticed there was some, it looked like some preliminary stuff into the parking area or Wyman's parking lot or Railroad Square, they called it, I guess.
Yeah, so I guess this is pretty much, they want to go underground because of the nearby railroad. They think it would be safer to go underground because of that.
Okay. All right, perfect. Counselor Cormier, do you have any comments?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay. Any other councilors have any questions or comments? If not, I will go to the public. Is there anyone on the line that wishes to speak in favor or against 65-21? For the second time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support or in opposition to 65-21? For the third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support or opposition to 65-21? If not, I would declare the public hearing closed.
Very well, counselor. We'll now move on to 66-21.
66-21, Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid, request to excavate the public highways and to run and maintain underground electric conduits together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary for the transmission of electricity. Set underground conduits to be located substantially in accordance with the plan filed here with Mark Nashua Street, Lummester, Massachusetts. The following of the streets and highways referred to, Plan Number 25301479, Nashua Street. Install conduit from MH 5385 on Main Street to MH 5230, MH 5230 to be installed on Nashua Street, from MH 5230 on Nashua Street. Install conduit to MH 5383 on Main Street. Rebecca, do you have something to add to that?
Um, nope. It's just pretty much, they're going to put the manhole in, they're going to run another conduit going down Main Street up to a riser pole, a pole two.
Okay. Perfect. Counselor Cormier, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, no questions. I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other councilors that have any questions or comments? If not, is there anyone in the public on the line that wishes to speak in support or in opposition to 66-21? For the second time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support or opposition to 66-21? For the third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support or in... or in opposition of sixty-six dash twenty-one? Hearing none, uh, Mr. President, I would declare the public hearing closed.
Thank you very much, Councilor. We'll now move on to sixty-seven dash twenty-one.
Sixty-seven dash twenty-one. Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid, request to excavate the public highways and to run and maintain underground electric conduits together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary for the transmission of electricity. Said underground conduits to be located substantially in accordance with the plan filed here with marked Prospect Street, Lomons, Massachusetts. The following of the streets and highways referred to. Plan number two-five-three-zero-one-four-seven-nine, Prospect Street. From MH fifty-three-eighty-six on Main Street. Install conduit to MH fifty-three-eighty-seven on Prospect Street. Install MH fifty-three-eighty-seven on Prospect Street. Um, Rebecca, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
Um, nope. They're just putting in a manhole and then runs in the conduit from manhole five thirty, uh, five-three-eight-six to the new manhole. Um, I think that's, um, pretty much maintains, uh, substation moving forward.
Okay. Okay. Yep. All right. Councilor Cormier, do you have any questions?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, any other councillors have any questions or comments? If not, I will go to the public. Um, is there anyone on the line that wishes to speak in support or in opposition of sixty-seven dash twenty-one? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support or in opposition of sixty-seven dash twenty-one? For the third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support or in opposition of sixty-seven dash twenty-one? Uh, hearing none, Mr. President, I would declare the public hearing closed.
Thank you, Councilor, and finally, we have our last public hearing of the evening. Sixty-eight dash twenty-one.
Sixty-eight dash twenty-one. Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid, request to excavate the public highways and to run and maintain underground electrical con- electric conduits together with such necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary for the transmission of electricity. Said underground conduits to be located substantially in accordance with the plan filed here with marked River Street, Lomons, Mass. Plan number two-five-three-zero-one-four-seven-nine, River Street. From MH fifty-three-eighty-three on Main Street. Instal, install conduit MH fifty-three-eighty-two on River Street. Install MH fifty-three-eighty-two on River Street. From MH fifty-three-eighty-two on River Street. Install conduit to riser pole two on River Street. Um, Rebecca, your last chance for comment.
(laugh) No, uh, same thing. Just installing a manhole, uh, to a riser pole, uh, pole two.
Uh, okay. Thank, thank you. Uh, Councilor Cormier?
I have no questions. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other councillors or questions or comments? If not, I will go to the public online. Um, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support or in opposition of sixty-eight dash twenty-one? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support or in opposition of sixty-eight dash twenty-one? And for the third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support or in opposition of sixty-eight dash twenty-one? Hearing none, Mr. President, I would declare the public hearing closed.
Thank you for all your efforts, Councilor. It was a long night for you.
Yeah, welcome.
You will now move on to the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on a matter specifically, specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions. However, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council this evening relative to an agenda item? And I'll ask a second time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council relative to an agenda item? And a third and final time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council relative to a agenda item? Hearing none, I'll declare the public forum closed, and we will, uh, be back in session, starting first with communications from the mayor and C dash seventy-nine.
C seventy-nine. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requested an appropriation of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars be made to the sidewalk expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
C seventy-nine is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well. C seventy-nine has been given regular course. Moving on to C-
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilor Frida?
Can we get a copy of, um, the names, uh, the locations of the sidewalks for the next meeting?
Can that be done, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, absolutely. I've already mentioned that and that to someone, and, uh, I should be in receipt of that soon, this week. Thank you.
Okay. Very well. And you'll distribute that to the, through clerk. Okay. Very well. Moving on to C dash eighty.
C dash eighty. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requested an appropriation of twelve thousand dollars be made to the city council expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding city council advertising budget.
Okay. C dash eighty is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well. C dash eighty has been given regular course. Moving on to C dash eighty-one.
C dash eighty-one. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requested an appropriation of forty-eight thousand dollars be made to the police department salary and wages account, the same amount to be transferred from the collective bargaining expense account regarding shortfalls, and I just wanted to make you and the finance chair aware there was, um, a letter that went through this afternoon regarding amendment that will be needing to take place for this eventually.
Okay. C dash eighty-one is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular-
Very well. C dash eighty-one has been given regular course. We now have an emergency preamble. Uh, Mr. Chairman, do you wanna, um, provide appropriate basis, uh, to vote on the emergency preamble before we do that?
Yeah. So the, the reason for the emergency is there's, uh, a very tight timeframe on training that needs to be done, um, because of the new, uh, police reform bill and, uh, there's been a lot coming down. Very, you know, last minute, a lot of it from the, from the state, so, um, they certainly need, uh, to do this on overtime. So i- it's, it's really time-sensitive and they do need to, they do need to get going on that training. It's mandated from the state.
Very well. Before we vote on the emergency preamble, I think we should have the, uh, clerk read the, uh, communication for the public.
C eighty-two. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requested an appropriation of one-hundred thousand dollars be made to the police department overtime account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding prevent negative short, uh, spending.
Okay. So you heard, um, a explanation for the Chairman of Finance relative to the necess- necessity of the emergency preamble, and I will take this by roll call vote on the emergency preamble, starting with Councilor Frida.
Yay.
Councilor Dombrowski.
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Councilor Angelini.
Yay.
Councilor Arndinger.
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier.
Yay.
I shall be recorded as yay. The emergency preamble passes by a vote of eight to zero. And Councilor, you wanna take up the, uh, measure now, or communication now?
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you very much. C dash eighty-two. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requested an appropriation of one-hundred thousand dollars be made to the police department overtime account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is regarding to prevent negative, uh, deficit spending. We did get a letter from, uh, uh, Acting Police Chief Aaron Kennedy. It's very brief, so I will read it. For the final payroll quarter, we request an emergency additional appropriation of one-hundred thousand dollars in funds to prevent negative spending of average weekly overtime costs. There is an earmark of overtime for training specific to the police reform that is not included in the day-to-day numbers. Therefore, a shortfall could occur if we do not receive transfer to cover projected weekly expenses, respectfully submitted, Aaron Kennedy. So obviously, this is all related to police reform. This has, you know, come down, uh, you know, in the city, many cities and towns very quickly. Uh, it needs to be done, um, sooner than later. Um, so we are, are in compliance with the reform bill. Um, so it would be my position that we grant, uh, C dash eighty-two, and I'll ask you to check with members of my committee, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
And Councilor Angelini.
Well, the people wanted police reform, now we're gonna pay for it, so I will be supporting this appropriation as well.
Thank you very much. You've heard the MS recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C dash eighty-two. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call. Councilor Frida?
Yay.
Councilor, uh, Dombrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor Angelini?
Yay.
Councilor Arndinger?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
I shall be recorded as yay. The, uh, communication is granted by a vote of eight to zero. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of one-hundred thousand dollars be made to the police department overtime account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is regarding, uh, to prevent negative spending. Uh, move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the order, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The order is adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to C dash eighty-three, we have a request for the suspension of the rules. Mr. Chairman, you wanna brief us on that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is a, um, this is something that was, um, put on, that they're trying to get the assessment, uh, center, um, for the promotional exams, um, moving. Um, and they, they, you know, obviously, there was a lot going on in City Hall, uh, last week with, uh, the death of the comptroller, so this did get missed and it did get on our agenda, so they're just asking that we suspend the rules and get it on the agenda for the first time, and, uh, and then, you know, we'll take it up for a vote at the next meeting. Um, the clerk would like to read it, uh, then I can just regular course it.
Absolutely. C eighty-three. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requested an appropriation of twenty-eight thousand dollars be made to the Personnel Contract Services account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding assessment center for promotional exams for police sergeant, police lieutenant, and fire lieutenant.
Okay. I think we do have to vote on the suspension of the rules, don't we?
Yep.
That's correct.
So, yeah, all, all those in favor of suspending the rules, uh, relative to C eighty-three, please say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Okay. So the rules have been suspended by a vote of eight to zero. Um, it's been read, I will refer C eighty-three to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well. C eighty-three has been given regular course. All right. Um, petitions, first time on the agenda, starting with seventy-one dash twenty-one.
Seventy-one dash twenty-one. J and J Consignment, request to renew license to deal secondhand articles at forty-one Dupont Circle.
I'm gonna refer seventy-one dash twenty-one to the clerk of, uh, Ways and Means, Councilor Frida.
Yes, Mr. President. Uh, regular course, and, um, I trust that the clerk will, uh, provide the necessary referrals before the next meeting?
They're back in, so they're good to go.
Okay.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Frida. Moving on to seventy-two dash twenty-one.
Seventy-two dash twenty-one. Best Buy Stores LP, number fourteen thirty-three. Request to renew license to deal secondhand articles at thirty-three Orchard Hill Park Drive.
Seventy-two dash twenty-one, I will refer to the clerk of Ways and Means, Councilor Frida.
Yes, that'll be regular course as well.
Thank you very much, Councilor. Uh, seventy-two dash twenty-one is given regular course. Moving on to seventy-three dash twenty-one.
Seventy-three dash twenty-one. Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid, request to excavate public highways and to run and maintain underground electric conduits together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary for the transmission of electricity. Said underground conduit to be located substantially in accordance with the plan filed here with marked Mechanic Street in Mount Pleasant Ave, Lomons, Massachusetts. The following of the streets and highways referred to. Plan number three oh three six three six two six, Mechanic Street in Mount Pleasant Ave, rebuilding manhole number five at the corner of Mechanic Street and Water Street. Installation of conduit under the road going east down Mechanic Street towards Mount Pleasant Ave to a new manhole number fifty-three seventy-three about two-hundred-and-fifty feet. Installation on about three-hundred feet of conduit from manhole number fifty-three seventy-three up Mount Pleasant Street to new manhole number fifty-three seventy-two on customer property for switchgear to be used in renovation of downtown underground system in the future. Will also, uh, be coming off of pole number three with conduit about one-hundred feet to manhole number fifty-three seventy-two and out of transformer number three about, next to manhole number fifty-three seventy-two about a hundred feet to go across the street and service customer-owned H H on private property located at the rear of thirty-seven Mechanic Street.
Seventy-three dash twenty-one is referred to the Chairwoman of Public Service.
Yes, Mr. President. Um, this will be given regular course, and we need to establish a hearing, um, for five twenty-four at six fifty P M.
Very well. You've heard the, uh, request of the, uh, Public Service Committee to, uh, establish a public hearing, uh, on seventy-three dash twenty-one for May twenty-fourth at six fifty P M. Um, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the establishing the public hearing, Vessley, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Seventy-three dash twenty-one has been given regular course with a public hearing for May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one at six fifty P M. Moving on to matters before the city council, starting with the City of Lomons' finance report. Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna guess that you don't have a report this evening?
That, that is correct, um, Mr. President. I'm gonna try to, you know, work with the mayor's office to see, uh, going forward if, um, you know, who's gonna be able to, to, you know, be responsible for giving me that. Um, certainly, you know, we can look at the, the last report received, which was a couple of meetings ago, and, you know, just deduct, uh, money that we've put on to take out of the stabilization fund. But, um, you know, certainly, I don't wanna report those numbers because, you know, there's other things like interest and things like that. Uh, usually, we get a report that is official. It is an official document. It comes from the comptroller and is time stamped in the city clerk's office, and I would feel more comfortable reading off of an official document, not doing math, um, stuff like that. So I, I'll work with them to see if going forward, we can have something for the financial-
Per- per- perhaps you can get us a report for our next meeting, or at least a, a report on when the report's gonna come, huh?
I'm hoping, yes.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, now I'll move on to finance, uh, starting with C seventy-two. Does the chairman have a report?
Yes, Mr. President. C dash seventy-two. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requesting an appropriation of seventeen thousand seventy dollars be made to the municipal building expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is regarding, uh, additional bat removal costs at two-ten Lancaster Street. So, um, you know, at the last meeting, there, there was some confusion, um, and I, I, I think I have cleared that up. Um, and I'm going to take a minute to explain. Um, so, back in the fall, um, I believe it was October twenty-first, we did approve an appropriation back of sixteen thousand dollars, um, for the bat removal at two-ten Lancaster Street. And back in the fall, um, by the time they were getting ready to actually remove the bats, they realized that it was illegal, um, in the state of Massachusetts to evict bats in the wintertime. Um, it's just, it's law. Um, so the bats had to stay there during the winter, but what they did use the money for, uh, was Thirpro, uh, to clean, uh, two-ten Lancaster Street, um, which was, um, I just wanna make sure I have the right amount, which was ten thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars. And then, um, they also, as many people are aware, some people took a tour, um, the fire department- Um, the Fire Department has been putting their bloods, tears into the building. They're doing a lot of work to it so they can use it. They think it's perfect, uh, for them. Um, so, they also built, uh, E911 server room, and the cost for that was $5,184. So the original bat removal money was redirected to those two things, Servpro and the E911 room at 210 Lancaster Street. Also been a lot of other, uh, work that's been done there. Home Depot has been wonderful, and has made some donations of material, um, and the building is coming along nice. So then that brings us to C-72, and there's a question of the amount of money we're approving, uh, for this, and, and, and why we're, uh, reapproving so much money. And so, that's what happened in October, and now, in the spring, they did the actual bat removal, which was, uh, the amount of $17,070, which entailed, uh, basically, a lot of patching of the building. All the eaves and holes, uh, where the critters were coming in, they had to, uh, have a couple of men up on a lift. Uh, they had to have a company go in there and bug up all the holes after they successfully removed all the bats, because obviously, they don't want bats and other critters back in there. So it was a pretty, uh, arduous, um, undertaking. And that is how we've come up with an additional $17,070 for bat removal. So, everything has now been cleaned up, um, and the bats are, are gone, and, uh, the building has been secured, so they will not, should not have that kind of problem again. So that is an explanation of this latest, um, amount on C-72. And I will ask you to, I, I am personally in favor of it, and I'll ask you to check with members of my committee.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Uh, I would just say that I think that's a fair price for having to remove bats. Um, so I would be in favor of this as well.
Okay, Councilor Angelini. Who's your Councilor Angelini?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, great. May I pose a question to the Chairman of Finance?
You certainly may.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, was the, do you know what the Servpro cleanup cost? Was that for the removal of the bat guano, or cleaning of the building in general?
Um, I believe it was, I believe most of it was from all of bats and stuff that were living up in there. There was a lot of droppings getting into the actual building. That's where, there, where most of it was. Um, they wanted a professional company to go in there and, and clean it.
But, but that was done after the bats were removed? I'm hope, I'm hoping that, that you're gonna answer that in, in the affirmative.
Well, they, they did it. From what I understand, they did that in the fall. But I don't know all the details of, I don't know if the bats hibernate up there for the, for the winter and the drop. I, I think that they, they were staying up in the attic, and they weren't getting into the areas where they were working. You know, the, like, the actual, um, you know, the actual rooms of the upstairs. Once the building was occupied, I think they were staying out of there, and they were able to keep them up in the attic until they were able to remove them.
All right, and I'm just.
But the filth was not a problem after they cleaned it in, in the fall.
All right. I'm just hoping this is the last, uh, request for funds for cleanup, uh, after the bats have been removed, that's, that's all. So, having, having, uh, my question answered, Mr. President, I will support this as well.
Very well. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-77. Is there any further, I'm sorry, C-72. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, this will be by roll call, starting with Councilor Frida.
Yay.
Councilor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor Angelini?
Yay.
Councilor Arndinger?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of eight to zero. C-72 is granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $17,070 be made to the Municipal Building Expense Account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is regarding additional battery moves in Lancaster Street. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please say yay. Yay?
Yay.
Yay.
Anyone opposed? The order is adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to C-78. Is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-78, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requesting an appropriation of $450,000 paid to the Wire Department Expense Account. I'm sorry, excuse me, the Wire Department Capital Outlay Expense Account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is regarding improvements at the intersection of Nelson Street and North Main Street. Um, this, this, actually, this appropriation, I, I did get an expl, a better explanation of it. Um, th, this is gonna be part of a, a bigger project where they're gonna, um, they're gonna do a bigger project from Washington Square all the way up and realign, uh, Nelson Street, North Main Street. But, um, also, part of it too, when it is incorporated with the rail trail, is that there's additional land takings. So this $450,000 is going to, will be part of that project for land takings. Um, and I do have a letter here from John Roseberry. It's not the most lengthiest letter, uh, but it's, it's more than a paragraph. I am gonna read it, because I think it's important for everybody to understand. Um, the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division, Mass, is proposing the reconstruction of approximately 2,100 feet of Route 12, which is North Main Street between Hamilton Street, Lyndale Avenue, and the, and Washington Street. The project includes an 1,800-foot section of the Twin Cities Rail Trail, TCRT, a shared-use path that will connect Pittsburgh and Lomester, and will run parallel to Route 12, which is North Main Street, through the project area. Section improvements are proposed at the four main intersections within the project limits, including new signals at Washington Street, Nelson Street, Watertower Plaza, driveway, and Lyndale Avenue, Hamilton Street, along Route 12, North Main Street. The project includes roadway widening, geometry, traffic signal, and safety improvements, and pedestrian and bicycle accommodation improvements. It also includes a 10-foot shared-use path that runs full length of the project, which will connect the proposed Twin Cities Rail Trail at both ends of this project. Other enhancements include new storm drain improvements, granite curb, concrete sidewalk, and landscaping features. As a result of this construction, there are many fee takings, 11, which are permanent, 17 temporary, and 22 easements, which will be, which will need to be compensated for. I, I did, um, send a copy to the Council. Everybody should have got that late this afternoon. John Roseberry did give me a breakdown of, um, uh, what the cost is, these, uh, easements. And, um, so, everybody should have that. Um, it is my recommendation, Mr. President, that we, uh, appropriate the money for these land takings, and obviously, we'll be hearing more about it, uh, in the future. They'll be coming down with the actual land-taking, uh, language that's gonna have to be done, but we certainly need to get the funding in place so that they can be assured that the funding is there before they, you know, and the Council has a, a desire to move forward with this, by putting the funding in place before they, they're doing any of the other work. So it would be my recommendation that we grant this petition, and I'll ask you for this communication, and I'll ask you to pull my committee.
Yes, of course. Uh, Councilor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
And Councilor Angelini? Councilor Angelini?
I'll make it unanimous, Mr. President.
Very well. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-78. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President?
Yes, Councilor Frida?
To the Finance Chair. The, uh, list that you gave us today for compensation, uh, why is that, um, $562,000 as opposed to the $450,000 that's on the, uh, agenda?
Yep. Thank, thank you very much, um, for that question. What's happening is I have been advised by the Mayor's Office, I, I did ask that question. I was advised by the Mayor's Office that some of the landowners actually, um, and she, the, the Mayor's Office will give me all the, the details, but the reason for the difference is some of the landowners actually, uh, are donating their land, um, and they do not want any compensation for the land taking. So that is why there is a difference, um, and it is to the city's, uh, advantage. Uh, it's, so it's actually cheaper than, than what you're seeing on there, and that is the reason why.
Well, there, there are three, there are already three on here that are marked with donations that, uh, are minimal, and that's already taken into consideration, because the, the value reads 565,000, and the, the amount, uh, to be paid is 562,000. So are you saying that there are more people now that are gonna be donating their land?
Uh, that I don't know.
And it works, Mark, yeah?
I, through the chair, I was told that there are some people that are donating their land, and that is the reason for the discrepancy. Um, so, certainly, my concern was, I, I'd really be concerned if they were asking for too much money, but in this case, they're not asking for, it's, it's actually less than what is on that proposal. So, if they need more, they can certainly come back, but that's what I've been told.
I think that's the question.
Disculpations that have been made.
I think that's my question. We have, we have a little bit of a habit sometime of, of supporting one amount, and then it comes back to us with a, um, a correction or an addition that we weren't aware of when we voted the first time. So then, you know, the, the comment is always, well, we supported 450, are you not gonna put an additional 60,000 in now? So, I mean, it'd be nice to know the exact number when we're voting on these. Plus, um, i- it's probably a good time to bring it up too, and, and I, I've been hearing, and I don't know if any other Councilors are hearing the same thing, but I've heard from a number of different people, or actually were questioned by a number of different people, that there's gonna be a serious delay of over a year to two years of the rail trail because of issues with CSX and Carter Park, not being able to purchase, um, the, the rail from, that goes through Carter Park. So it's not gonna connect from one side to the other. Do, does anybody have any idea about that?
I, I have no idea. It's not part of this. I personally don't know. It's, it's not part of this petition. I, I don't, I have no idea.
I, I realize it's not part of this petition, but we're asking to spend almost a half a million dollars for easements, and is there any guarantee we're gonna be able to connect these dots here? Or is that an issue? I mean, is this something that can wait till the next meeting and get some of these answers? Is there a time, I mean, is there a, I mean, is there a discrepancy on, on the compiled list you gave us? So what's being asked for? And then there's a question, and I, you know, there may be no truth to that, but I don't know. But I've had a number of different people, a couple from Pittsburgh mentioned it, and, uh, people saying that there's, there's gonna be an issue with the rail trail. I mean, it'd be just, it'd be nice to know if that's, if there is something going on. And it'd be nice to have two numbers that match.
Right. Well, you know, we certain, uh, we certainly, if that's the will of the committee, we can certainly delay it, and we can have, I can have, um, um, Nikki down. Uh, I know that she's been working on the rail trail, and, uh, I'll, I'll bring John Roseberry down. We'll bring them all down, and they can answer all these questions, if, if that's, that's the will of the, of the Finance Committee or the rest of the Council. But I, I don't have the answers to those questions. I, I don't.
All right, I'll throw the ball back in your court. I, I would like to see, I would like to get the answers before we vote. Talking a half a million dollars here. You know? I mean, I'd like to see the numbers all match up and, and just make sure we're proceeding the, the way we, we were assuming.
Well, Mr. President, if you'd like to repoll my committee, you may.
Councilor Pauline, well, what's your, what's your position, Mr. Chairman?
Is to grant this petition.
Very well. Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Um, Mr. President, I, I have to say that I haven't heard any of the rumors. Um, I, I would still support the petition.
Very well. Councilor Angelini?
Uh, Mr. President, my fear would be that if we didn't pass this this evening, you know, I mean, a lot of times what happens in these grant proposals, time is of the essence, and if the takings aren't done by a certain timeframe, then the other money's in jeopardy. So I know there's a lot of money that's already been committed to this project, and I'd hate to put that funding in jeopardy, um, over a few thousand dollar discrepancy here. Um, it's something that I'm sure we can get answers to, uh, that will make sense. I, I understand the at-large, complex concerns, and I, I certainly agree. And, uh, it would have been nice if, if we had additional information, but I, I certainly don't want to put us in a position where we might jeopardize, you know, this rail trail funding and the money that we've already committed to this project. Plus, we had National Grid in here, uh, before us this evening, and, and so, a, a lot of other folks are planning and coordinating to get this intersection, uh, transformation done in a timely manner. So I, I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna stick with my vote to, uh, uh, recommend that we, we, we pass this this evening.
All right. So the, uh, we, the, uh, I'm sorry, the Finance Committee reme, remains committed to passing or granting C-78. Councilor Frida, any additional discussion, or any other, Councilor?
Yeah, ab, actually, I do have a comment. Uh, I, I fully understand how grants work. Believe me, I've been through enough grants in 32 years to know how they work. So I, I do know that, uh, I think my first question was, is this time-sensitive? I think I asked that first. The second thing is, we're not talking about a few thousand dollars, we're talking about a hundred thousand dollars. We're going from 450 to 562. That's a hundred thousand dollar difference. And we don't know what the difference is, and we're, we're talking about some donations that are checked off, that the Chico's are donating their land, uh, the Herndon's are donating their land. Those are small numbers. Uh, they'd have to be pretty big to get up to another hundred thousand dollars that's gonna be donated to make up that difference. I mean, I just think we have an obligation to know what we're voting on when it's a hundred thousand dollar difference, that's all. And I would think the rest of the Council would feel the same way.
There is, there is another potential explanation that I might offer, and, and that, we don't know, it was in that capital outlay expense account to start with. So there may have been money in that account already, um, from, from a previous project, and they decided they needed 450 to be able, to be available to make the, uh, difference between what they have to lay out. So.
And I, and I.
I, I agree. I don't, I, I don't know, I don't know either, but as, as Council, as the Finance Chair said, you know, better to be in the position of, you know, um, not overfunding the request, uh, but, uh, underfunding the request, if that's what we've done. I mean.
But I, I understand that, but I also don't like being in a position where we're asked to fund 450, and then two weeks later, it comes back and says, by the way, I made a mistake, it was actually 560. I mean, and so now we're.
That's a, that's a good.
That asks a lot, and then, and then we're, you know, you're not gonna not support the 100 down the road because you just supported 450. So it's, and that's, that's, and I'm not saying that your explanation probably isn't accurate. But the point is, we don't have an explanation. That's, that's my whole point.
I agree, and, and your suggestion is, is not, um, you know, makes sense, except for this is a situation where we know what, what the ultimate number is. It's not a situation where the ultimate number is, is communicated to us after the fact. We know already upfront that what the total cost of those, uh, proposed add dam. We, actually, you know, with, as you, as you know, Councilor, from the industry that you work in, those are add-damn amounts, those are estimates. Um, we don't know what, I mean, it is conceivable that people could, I, I mean, I think some of these parcels are probably very small, um, so it's not likely to produce litigation, but you could always have a situation where a tax, uh, uh, landowner says, no, I'm not gonna accept that. So, do we know what the final number is? Yeah, probably not, but, um... Yeah, probably not, but at least we know that the num, this is, what's not being surprised on us is what the ultimate number is, because we know it. So, in any event, any further discussion? Okay, this will be by roll call, starting with Counsel Frida.
Nay.
I'm sorry, Counsel, is it yea or nay?
No, it's nay.
Nay, okay. Counsel Dombrowski?
Yea.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Counsel Angelini?
Yea.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yea.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yea.
And I shall be recorded as yea by a vote of seven to one. C-78 is granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars be made for the wire department capital outlay expense account, the same amount to be transferred to the stabilization fund. Once again, as regarding improvements in the intersection of Nelson Street and North Main Street, move to the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the order, please say yea. Yea?
Yea.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
The order is adopted by a vote of seven to one. Moving on to legal affairs, starting with C-63. Is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Communication sixty-three, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that the City Council establish the creation of a Human Rights Commission for the City of Leominster. We had a subcommittee meeting a while ago, we had set up a deadline of this Friday to receive submissions. We did receive a few. We have a subcommittee meeting scheduled for this Wednesday that I may need to reschedule, Mr. President, but I'll take that up under old business at the end of the meeting. But for now, I would request further time, and I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
And Counsel David Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to give C-63 further time. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of granting C-63 further time, please say yea. Yea?
Yea.
Anyone opposed? C-63 is given further time by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to C-76, is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Communication seventy-six, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests the City of Leominster to revise ordinance, Chapter sixteen, Personnel, Article eleven, Personnel Wage and Salary Plan, Division three, Classification Plan, Section sixteen dash thirty-four, classification of positions be amended effective July first, twenty twenty-one, by deleting an entity from the existing table. I'll first read class title, I'll then read classification. Purchasing agent S eight, nurse, public health, S five, code enforcement inspector S six, plumbing inspector S seven, city treasurer, collector, assistant S five, and inserting in their place the following. Purchasing agent S ten, nurse, public health, S seven, code enforcement inspector S seven, plumbing inspector S eight, city treasurer, collector, assistant S six, and also by inserting a new class title and classification as follows, business development coordinator S seven. We had a public hearing earlier this evening, the Legal Affairs Committee, at that time, unanimously supported Communication seventy-six. So it is my, it continues to be my recommendation to grant Communication seventy-six. I'd ask you to poll my committee if there's a need, Mr. President.
I'll just reconfirm. Counsel Shalfo Zephyr, you're still in favor?
I am.
And Counsel David Cormier, you're still in favor?
I am, yes.
Okay. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs to grant C-76. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. This will be by roll call, starting with Counsel Frida.
Yea.
Counsel Dombrowski?
Yea.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Counsel Angelini?
Yea.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yea.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yea.
I shall be recorded as yea by a vote of eight to zero. C-76 has been granted. Moving on to seventy dash twenty-one, is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Communication seventy dash twenty-one, Angela Chabuski, Concert Conservation Agent, request to amend Chapter twenty-one of the revised ordinances entitled Water in Sewers, Article six, Stormwater and Erosion Control Regulations and Stormwater Ordinance, by inserting new definitions and updating the language. We, again, we had a public hearing earlier this evening, the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs at the time was to grant Communication seventy dash twenty-one. That remains my position. I would ask you to confirm with my committee.
Very well. Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
And Counsel David Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant seventy dash twenty-one, and, Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding that the conservation agent will work with Claire, Counsel Frida's daughter. There were some relatively minor tweaks that were discussed earlier, and we understand that's part of this process. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. This will be by, I'm sorry. Okay, this will be by roll call vote, starting with Counsel Frida.
Yea.
Counsel Dombrowski?
Yea.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Counsel Angelini?
Yea.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yea.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yea.
And I shall be recorded as yea. Seventy dash twenty-one is granted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to the Ways and Means Committee. Counsel Frida, we have a boatload of reappointments here that we need to vote on, starting with Adriana Fotakis.
Yay. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reapportment of Adriana Fotakis to the Council on Aging, term to expire four fifteen, twenty twenty-four. Now, I know I have this right. Counsel Dombrowski would be, you have a member of Ways and Means, if you would check with him.
I will. Counsel Dombrowski?
I agree.
Okay, so you've heard unanimous recommendation to approve the reappointment, or confirm the reappointment of Adriana Fotakis. Unfortunately, these have to be by roll call, starting with Counsel Frida.
Yea.
Counsel Dombrowski?
Yea.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Counsel Angelini?
Yea.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yea.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yea.
And I shall be recorded as yea by a vote of eight to zero. The reappointment of Adriana Fotakis is confirmed. Moving on to Betty David.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reapportment of Betty David to the Council on Aging, term to expire four fifteen, twenty twenty-four, and I would have you check with the other member of Ways and Means.
Very well. Counsel Dombrowski?
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation to confirm the reappointment of Betty David to the Council on Aging. Any discussion? Hearing none. By roll call, Counsel Frida?
Yea.
Counsel Dombrowski?
Yea.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Counsel Angelini?
Yea.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yea.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yea.
I shall be recorded as yea by a vote of eight to zero. The reappointment of Betty David to the Council on Aging is confirmed. Moving on to Larry Giannakis, Counsel Frida.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reapportment of Larry Giannakis, senior, to the Council on Aging, term to expire four fifteen, twenty twenty-four, and I would defer to my, the other member of the committee.
Very well. Counsel Dombrowski?
I agree to confirm.
Very well. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to confirm the reappointment of Larry Giannakis to the Council on Aging. Any discussion? Hearing none. This will be by roll call. Counsel Frida?
Yea.
Counsel Dombrowski?
Yea.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Counsel Angelini?
Yea.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yea.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yea.
And I shall be recorded as yea by a vote of eight to zero. The reappointment of Larry Giannakis, senior, to the Council on Aging is confirmed. Moving on to the reappointment of Rodney Schaefer to the Cultural Commission.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reapportment of Rodney Schaefer to the Cultural Commission, term to expire four fifteen, twenty twenty-four, and I would refer to Counsel Dombrowski.
Very well. Counsel Dombrowski, you okay?
I agree with the appointment.
Very well. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to confirm the reappointment of Rodney Schaefer to the Cultural Commission. Any discussion? Hearing none. By roll call, Counsel Frida?
Yea.
Counsel Dombrowski?
Yea.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Counsel Arndinger? I'm sorry, Counsel Angelini?
Yea.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yea.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yea.
And I shall be recorded as yea by a vote of eight to zero. The reappointment of Rodney Schaefer to the Cultural Commission is confirmed. Moving on to Chester Carter.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reapportment of Chester Carter to the Historical Commission, term to expire four fifteen, twenty twenty-four, and I would refer to the other member of the Ways and Means.
Counsel Dombrowski?
I agree with the confirmation.
Very well. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to confirm the reappointment of Chester Carter to the Historical Commission. Any discussion? Hearing none. This will be by roll call. Counsel Frida?
Yea.
Counsel Dombrowski?
Yea.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Counsel Angelini?
Yea.
Counsel Arndinger?
Oops, yea.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yea.
And I shall be recorded as yea by a vote of eight to zero. Chester Carter's reappointment to the Historical Commission is confirmed. Moving on to Michael Carrigan.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reapportment of Michael Carrigan to the Historical Commission, term to expire four fifteen, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, Counsel Dombrowski, you okay with that?
I think he's having a connectivity issue because he just disconnected from the meeting.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll move forward with the vote unless there's any discussion. Okay, Counsel Frida?
Yea.
Counsel Dombrowski, in case you're with us?
He's not back yet.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Counsel Angelini?
Yea.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yea.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yea.
I shall be recorded as yea. The reappointment of Michael Carrigan to the Historical Commission is confirmed. Counsel Dombrowski, are you with us?
He is not yet.
Madam Clerk, will you note that as a seven, zero vote for technical reasons, technical difficulty reasons?
Absolutely.
With the connection? Moving on to Patrick LaPointe.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reapportment of Patrick LaPointe to the Historical Commission, term to expire four fifteen, twenty twenty-four, and I'm down to a committee of one.
Yeah, I've noticed that.
I've always joined this, joined this again.
Counsel Dombrowski, are you with us? That's okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you an opportunity to register your vote on Mr. Carrigan's reappointment. So far, we have seven votes in favor. Is yours an eighth?
Yes, it is.
All right, Madam Clerk, if you could update your records with Mr. Counsel Dombrowski's vote on Michael Carrigan?
Absolutely.
And Counsel Dombrowski, your position on the reappointment of Patrick LaPointe to the Historical Commission?
I agree to adopt the confirmation.
Okay. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee now constituted at two to the Historical Commission. Any discussion? Hearing none. Counsel Frida?
Yea.
Counsel Dombrowski?
Yea.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Counsel Angelini?
Yea.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yea.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yea.
And I shall be recorded as yea by a vote of eight to zero. The reappointment of Patrick LaPointe to the Historical Commission is confirmed. Moving on to Ronald Girard.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reapportment of Ronald Girard to the Historical Commission, term to expire four fifteen, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, Counsel Dombrowski?
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to confirm the reappointment of Ronald Girard to the Historical Commission. Any discussion? Hearing none. By roll call, Counsel Frida?
Yea.
Counsel Dombrowski?
Yea.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Counsel Angelini?
Yea.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yea.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yea.
And I shall be recorded as yea by a vote of eight to zero. The reappointment of Ronald Girard to the Historical Commission is confirmed. I am going to recuse myself from the next reappointment. I am also going to step down from the chair, and given the Vice President is not with us this evening, the order of succession indicates that the senior member of the council will also take the chair as Council President. Counsel Frida, I give you Council Presidency as well as the acting chairmanship, I guess, or Chair of Ways and Means.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reapportment of Mark Fadanza to the Library Board of Trustees, term to expire four fifteen, twenty twenty-four. My recommendation would be to confirm the appointment, and I'll go to the other member of Ways and Means, Counsel Dombrowski.
I agree with the Chair.
Okay, we have a unanimous recommendation to confirm Mark Fadanza as Library Board of Trustees. We will do a roll call, beginning with Counsel Dombrowski.
Yea.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Counsel Angelini?
Yea.
Counsel Arndinger?
Yea.
Counsel Pauline Cormier?
Yea.
Counsel David Cormier?
Yea.
And I will be recorded as yea by a vote of seven to zero. Mark Fadanza's appointment is confirmed.
Thank you, Counselor. And now, the reappointment of Lawrence L. Nefor.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the reapportment of Lawrence L. Nefor to the Library Board of Trustees, term to expire four fifteen, twenty twenty-four. My recommendation would be to confirm.
Very well. Counsel Dombrowski?
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of Ways and Means to reaffirm, to confirm the reappointment of Lawrence L. Nefor to the Library Board of Trustees. Any discussion? Hearing none, starting with Counsel Frida.
Yea.
Counsel Dombrowski? Counselor Dombrowski.
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counselor, uh, Angelini.
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger.
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier.
Hey.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of eight to zero, the reappointment of Lawrence L. Nefor to the Library Board of Trustees is confirmed. Moving on to sixty-one dash twenty-one, is the Chairwoman ready to report?
I am, sixty-one dash twenty-one, Entertainment Cinemas Boulevard. Requesting to renew theater license located at forty-five Stack Boulevard. Um, we have, uh, referrals back from the police department. Um, and so the, my recommendation would be to grant, uh, we could go to, um, Counselor Dombrowski.
I agree.
Very well, you've heard the MS recommendation of Ways and Means to grant sixty-one dash twenty-one. Any further discussion? All those in favor of granting sixty-one dash twenty-one, please, uh, indicate by saying yay, yay?
Yay.
Anyone opposed? Sixty-one dash twenty-one is granted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to sixty-two dash twenty-one, is the Chairwoman ready to report?
I am, sixty-two dash twenty-one, Protech Solutions, request to renew license to deal secondhand articles at three forty-five Central Street. Uh, we have the referral back from the police and the treasurer. Recommendation would be to grant and go to, uh, Counselor Dombrowski.
Very well.
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the MS recommendation of Ways and Means to grant sixty-two dash twenty-one. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of granting sixty-two dash twenty-one, please indicate by saying yay, yay?
Yay.
Anyone opposed? By a vote of eight to zero, sixty-two dash twenty-one has been granted. Moving on to sixty-nine dash twenty-one, is the Chairwoman ready to report?
I am, sixty-nine dash twenty-one, Sterling Jewels Incorporated, Incorporated, doing business as K Jewelers, number twelve eighty-five, request to renew license to deal secondhand articles at one hundred Commercial Road Mall at Whitney Field. Um, I need to defer to the clerk on this. It's, we have pending referrals, uh, have we not received referrals back from the police and the treasurer?
Uh, no, they did just come in and they are all set now.
They're okay, okay.
Yes.
So, um, my recommendation would be to grant and defer to Counselor Dombrowski.
I agree.
All right, very well, you've heard the MS recommendation of Ways and Means to grant sixty-nine dash twenty-one. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of granting sixty-nine dash twenty-one, please say yay, yay?
Yay.
Yay.
Anybody opposed? Sixty-nine dash twenty-one is granted by a vote of sixteen, uh, of eight to zero. Moving on to Public Service, um, starting with sixty-three dash twenty-one, is the Chairwoman ready to report?
I am, sixty-three dash twenty-one, Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid, request permission to locate poles, wires and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Queens Road, Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid, to install one single own pole on Queens Road, beginning at a point approximately thirty feet east of the center line of the intersection of Elm Street, and continuing approximately twenty-four feet in the north direction. Install one stub pole with anchor to support an existing pole line due to the residence of forty Queens Road, removing a tree that has an existing guide wire installed in it. We had a public hearing this evening and, um, the recommendation would be to grant.
Very well.
That was my other member.
You've heard the MS, I'm sorry.
I did check with my other member, Pauline Cormier.
Okay, very well, Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the MS recommendation of the Public Service Committee to grant sixty-three dash twenty-one. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of granting sixty-three dash twenty-one, please indicate by saying yay, yay?
Yay.
Anyone opposed? Sixty-three dash twenty-one is granted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to sixty-four dash twenty-one, is the Chairwoman ready to report?
I am, sixty-four dash twenty-one, Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid, request permission to locate poles, wires and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. White Street National Grid to install one single own pole on White Street, beginning at a point approximately two hundred and ninety feet south of the center line of the intersection of Bridwood Drive and continuing approximately fifteen feet in each direction. Install new poles, number six, with anchor to serve MBTA meter pole. Uh, again, we had a public hearing this evening and the recommendation would be to grant.
Very well, you've heard the, I'll check with Counselor Pauline Cormier, you're, you're in favor?
I am.
You've heard the MS recommendation of Public Service Committee to grant sixty-four dash twenty-one. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of sixty-four dash twenty-one, indicate by saying yay, yay?
Yay.
Anyone opposed? Sixty-four dash twenty-one is granted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to sixty-five dash twenty-one, is the Chairwoman ready to report?
Sixty-five dash twenty-one, Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid, request permission to excavate the public highways and to run and maintain underground electric conduit together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary for the transmission of electricity. Set underground conduits to be located substantially in accordance with the plan filed here with Mark Hamilton Street, Lomester, Mass. The following in the streets and highways referred to. Plan number two five three zero one four seven nine, Hamilton Street. Install conduit from manhole number fifty-three eighty-five on Main Street to manhole number fifty-three eighty-four on Hamilton Street. Install conduit from manhole number fifty-three eighty-four on Hamilton Street to rise the pole forty-four on Hamilton Street. Install conduit from manhole number fifty-three eighty-four to rise the pole sixty-six on Main Street. Again, we had a public hearing this evening and my recommendation would be to grant. Check with me as a member of the committee.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the MS recommendation of the Public Service Committee to grant sixty-five dash twenty-one. Is there any further discussion? Aren't we all gonna miss Counselor Cormier's cuckoo clock in June?
I was trying to beat it, but I couldn't.
Uh, all those in favor of granting sixty-five dash twenty-one, please indicate by saying yay, yay?
Yay.
Anyone opposed? By a vote of eight to zero, sixty-five dash twenty-one is granted. Moving on to sixty-six dash twenty-one, is the Chairwoman ready to report?
I am, sixty-six dash twenty-one, Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid, request to excavate the public highways and to run and maintain underground electric conduit together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary for the transmission of electricity. Set underground conduits to be located substantially in accordance with the plan filed here, here with Mark Nashua Street, Lomester, Massachusetts. The following of the streets and highways referred to. Plan number two five three zero one four seven nine, Nashua Street. Install conduit from manhole number fifty-three eighty-five on Main Street to manhole number fifty-two thirty, manhole number fifty-two thirty to be installed on Nashua Street. From manhole fifty-two thirty on Nashua Street, install conduit to manhole number fifty-three eighty-three on Main Street. Again, we had our public hearing this evening and my recommendation would be to grant. Check with Counselor Cormier.
Very well, Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
You've heard the MS recommendation of the Public Service Committee to grant sixty-six dash twenty-one. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of granting sixty-six dash twenty-one, please indicate by saying yay, yay?
Yay.
Yay.
Anyone opposed? Sixty-six dash twenty-one is granted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to sixty-seven dash twenty-one, is the Chairwoman ready to report?
I am, sixty-seven dash twenty-one, Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid, request to excavate the public highways and to run and maintain underground electric conduits together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary for the transmission of electricity. Set underground conduits to be located substantially in accordance with the plan filed here with Mark Prospect Street, Lomester, Massachusetts. The following of the streets and highways referred to, plan number two five three zero one four seven nine, Prospect Street, from manhole fifty-three eighty-six on Main Street. Install conduit to manhole fifty-three eighty-seven on Prospect Street. Install manhole fifty-three eighty-seven on Prospect Street. We had a public hearing this evening and, uh, the recommendation would be to grant. Check with Counselor Cormier.
Very well, Counselor Cormier.
I agree.
Very well, you've heard the MS recommendation of the Public Service Committee to grant sixty-seven dash twenty-one. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of granting sixty-seven dash twenty-one, please indicate by saying yay, yay?
Yay.
Anyone opposed? Sixty-seven dash twenty-one is granted by a vote of eight to zero. And finally, sixty-eight dash twenty-one, Madam Chairwoman, are you ready to report?
Yeah, I am, I actually have the plan number memorized. Uh, sixty-eight dash twenty-one, Mass Electric Company doing business as National Grid, request to excavate the public highways and to run and maintain underground electric conduit together with such necessary sustaining and protecting features, fixtures as it may find necessary for the transmission of electricity. Set underground conduits to be located substantially in accordance with the plan filed here with Mark River Street, Lomester, Massachusetts. Plan number two five three zero one four seven nine, River Street from manhole fifty-three eighty-three on Main Street. Install conduit to manhole fifty-three eighty-two on River Street. Install manhole fifty-three eighty-two on River Street. From manhole number fifty-three eighty-two on River Street. Install conduit to rise the pole number two on River Street. The, we had the public hearing this evening and the recommendation would be to grant.
Okay, Counselor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
You've heard the MS recommendation of the Public Service Committee to grant sixty-eight dash twenty-one. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of granting sixty-eight dash twenty-one, please indicate by saying yay?
Yay.
Anyone opposed? Sixty-eight dash twenty-one is granted by a vote of eight to zero. Thank you much, very much, uh, Madam Chairwoman. Moving on to new business, is there anything, anything on the new business? Okay, um, old business? Counselor Dombrowski, you have a public hearing to, uh, adjust? I'm sorry, subcommittee meeting to adjust?
I've got a subcommittee meeting scheduled for this Wednesday. Um, and I, I, I need to pick up my daughter, uh, from, from college. I had that on, but I can reschedule it to the following Wednesday. Um, and I just wanna make sure that's okay with my subcommittee.
All right, so that's on, uh, C sixty-three?
Cool.
All right, um, I'll check with your committee members, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Uh, that, that works for me, but that's Wednesday, the nineteenth.
Yes, I'd like to do it at the same time if that, if that's okay.
Um, I'm sorry, Counselor Dombrowski, Counselor Bedanza, that's the only day I'm not available. I can either have the assistant clerk run the meeting or ask, um, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr if she could run the meeting in my absence, if that's amenable.
Uh, yeah, I, I think the assistant clerk would be fine.
Okay.
All right. Okay, what, what time was that meeting, uh, gonna be scheduled for, Counselor?
I believe it was five thirty.
Five thirty, okay. And Counselor David Cormier?
That works for me.
All right, so, um, you'll, uh, you'll send out the appropriate notices cancelling the five twelve meeting and reestablishing that May nineteenth at five thirty. Um, anything else on?
Inconvenient. I apologize for any inconvenience.
Oh, okay, thank you, Counselor. Um, any, anything else on the old business? Okay, um, community calendar, I did indicate, um, we'd have an opportunity for reflections relative to the passing of our comptroller. Uh, before we get to that, is there anything under the community calendar that anybody wants to indicate? Okay, Counselor Frida, I believe you requested an opportunity for some reflections and remembrances of our comptroller.
Uh, yeah, I just think someone who's spent that much time servicing the city alumnus deserves to have our comments, um, quite more about him. Um, I mean, he, John was certainly John, we all knew him different ways and, um, I started with John when I was on the school committee back in the eighties, uh, when John first started working under John Teta. And I think there's been so many different things, you know, retirees and questioning his positions on whether to give raises or not give raises and, but I think any of us that knew him and Counselor Bedanza, I think you were probably in, uh, City Solicitor back then, there was no money in this city. I mean, there was zero money, we were in serious trouble back then. I, the, the schools were not Ed Reform, it was, um, we were autonomous, we were looking for money to run the schools. There wasn't any money to give, we were doing special acts on the state level to try to fund things. And John, John really, um, really weren't under John Teta on, on how to really try to pull us out of this mess. And it was not easy. So, uh, he just had a real affection for, um, making the city finances work and to pull us out of where we were back then and, and to make some tough decisions, be criticized, but know it was in the best interest of, of the city. I mean, many of us didn't agree with him sometimes, a lot of us agreed with him a lot of the time. But, um, his heart and soul was really in this city. Um, we all know going by late at night, you'd see his tie here, he was constantly here and gave us a plant and Greg Japp Lane and the financial team. I mean, we have a, a dedicated group of people and, um, John just really deserves to be remembered for his financial acumen and, and how he's done things in the city. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Counselor Frida, for those kind remarks. Does any other Counselor, uh, want to offer some reflections?
Uh, Counselor Bedanza?
Yes, Counselor Dombrowski.
Um, I, I echo a lot of the, uh, uh, comments made by Counselor Frida. Um, I, in the approximately twenty years I've been on the Council, I, I found myself at odds with, with John on many occasions and I think that, uh, I, I think we just had different philosophies on, on how government was to work, but, um, you know, John Richard grudgingly earned my respect through the years. Um, he was a very loyal guy. Um, and I, I think many of us on the Council probably don't realize how, how loyal he was. Uh, and he was a very smart guy and oftentimes, because of his position, um, he was unpopular. Um, but despite that, he, he always came down, he always came down to the council chambers and he always answered every question asked by anybody who wanted to ask it. Um, and, uh, he, he, he was a fixture here for a very long time. Um, and, uh, a very dedicated, um, agent and, and leader of the city for a very, very long time. Um, I, as Counselor Frida said, I, I live near City Hall and there were very few nights, and I'm, and I'm including Friday and Saturday, that we would drive by, uh, City Hall and not see that light on. Um, so I was, I was very sad to hear of his passing. Um, and, uh, I, I think that the, the city has, um, has certainly lost, uh, a very, a very big part of the city for many, many years.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, any other Counselors want to issue or echo any, uh, reflections or remembrances?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, Counselor Cormier.
Counselor Cormier. Um, yeah, I just, you know, I, I've had the pleasure of working with, uh, you know, John as a finance chair back, uh, for one year in twenty eighteen, prior to me becoming president, and then again, uh, the past couple of years. And I, I can say that anybody that was around in twenty thirteen can probably imagine that our, um, our working relationship kinda was off to a rocky start, you know? It was, um, it was a little rough in the beginning, but, um, you know, we got to know each other. Um, and, um, you know, we ended up working very well together, I think. Um, you know, he certainly, um, I, I think, when I think of, of John Richard, there's a certain song by Frank Sinatra that comes to mind, I Did It My Way. Um, you know, he certainly, he, he had his own way of doing things. Um, you know, he was very smart, um, when it came to finances, there's no question about it. Uh, did create a lot of controversy and- Uh, did create a lot of controversy and, you know, I, I listened to a lot of retirees, some of, some of them were my own family members, you know? That felt they deserved raises over the years and things like that, but, um, you know, John was committed to building a, uh, a pension system that would never experience or hopefully never experience problems like we're seeing in other parts of the country. Um, you know, Rhode Island, for example, um, you know, I mean, there's places in this country where, you know, I don't know what the future is for municipal for government employees and retirees, there's problems and I, I, you know, John was committed to ensuring that we would never have those problems, uh, in the city. And, um, you know, and it did ruffle a lot of feathers, but, um, cert- um, he certainly was a fixture here. And is, hopefully, his legacy will be that there will be a, a, all the retirees of the city for many generations to come. So, never have to worry about where their next, uh, tech is coming from. Um, you know, I certainly, like I said, I, I, we got to, we got, in the end, we had a great working relationship. And I can tell you that I experienced, uh, just, there were a couple of questions on tonight's financial appropriations that I'm sure if I could have bounced off of him today, there probably would have been a lot less, you know, questions. But, um, you know, we're gonna have to wait to move forward without him, it's going to be very, very different, there is no question about it. And, um, you know, I, um, I'm still thinking about his family and, uh, those that he left behind that loved him the most. Um, he's gonna be missed by a lot of people, certainly his knowledge is going to be very, very hard to replace. Somebody's gonna have some very big shoes to fill, he was very, very dedicated to what he, to what he did. And I certainly am gonna miss working with him, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Cormier, uh, any other Councilors? Well, I'll add, um, I'll echo something Councilor Frieda said, that, you know, when I was city solicitor, um, we were literally borrowing money, uh, to pay teachers' salaries. Um, things were pretty bleak, um, and, you know, now the city of Lomester is in an enviable financial position that there aren't many communities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts can match. Um, and that's a lot to do, not just with John, but a lot to do with John. Um, of course, it's first and foremost our taxpayers, but, uh, we have a, and have had a strong financial team and John was a integral part of that, as we all know. Um, I enjoyed a great mutual respect with John, a great working relationship. I didn't agree with him a hundred percent of the time, but most of the time I did. And, um, we, uh, always were able to have a discussion. And, uh, his institutional knowledge, especially of the city of Lomester, as many of you have indicated, was significant. It's gonna be very difficult to replace, we'll be fortunate to come close, uh, with a new comptroller that, uh, can match, uh, what John did for the city. Um, going through the receiving line at the wake, um, last Friday night, I was particularly struck with, um, probably John's greatest accomplishment and that is his family, um, three wonderful young women, um, and a beautiful wife, um, a really strong family and, and you can see clearly that John was a great family man. Apart from all the time and effort that he, uh, gave to the city of Lomester, whether you agreed with him all the time or not, um, I don't think anyone here would dispute how much, uh, time and effort that John put in to the city of Lomester. Um, and it was great benefit to this community and, uh, you know, it will resonate for many years to come. Um, so, he's gonna be missed, there's no question about it, and as Councilor Cormier indicated just a moment ago, uh, we're gonna see it very soon as we approach budget time, uh, we're all gonna have to roll up our sleeves and work a little harder. And, um, I, uh, am gonna definitely miss him, uh, and, uh, his expertise. Um, and, you know, we, we, uh, are unlike a lot of communities and we've, our financial team, if you string together John's years here and, uh, Jack Tater's years here, um, we're talking about, uh, Councilor Frieda helped me, but I'm thinking we're talking almost seventy years worth of, uh, really a seamless, uh, transition between two of our comptrollers or city accountants, that's, uh, not seen in a lot of communities and, and, uh, now we're...
Absolutely.
Now we're approaching a, a very different thing, so, uh, you know, far too young on a, on a personal level, uh, whatever, whether you agreed with him or not all the time. Um, whether it be with, relative to the pension system or, you know, um, sort of, uh, our, uh, stabilization account or whatever the issue might be. Um, on a human side, gone far too soon, um, and, um, that's a tragedy and, and something that I think we're all probably still processing. But, uh, rest in peace, John, uh, thank you for your efforts and, uh, you will live on in a wonderful family that you left behind. Is there anything else that anybody else would like to add? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilor Angelini?
Um, if I may, um, I'd like to recognize someone else, a real treasurer, a human being that we, we lost, well, um, M. Donald Pomerini. Um, who I believe was a charter member of the Conservation Commission here in Lomester. Um, a member of the Historical Commission for years. And as long as I can recall, voting on Ward Five, City Hall, um, he and his wife were there every election cycle. And, uh, I, I think he'll truly be missed as well, a teacher, just a wonderful human being, and, uh, I just wanted to recognize Don as well.
Very appropriate, Councilor Angelini. In fact, it wouldn't, it would be, uh, I think fitting for us to have a moment of silence for, uh, Muggsy Pomerini as well. Okay, thank you, would anybody else like to, uh, reflect on, on Pomerini's life? Okay, thank you for that, Councilor Angelini, um, may I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
A second there.
It's now Councilor Cormier, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, thank you for all your hard work, everyone, this evening, uh, have a great week and, uh, we'll see you soon.
Aye.
Good night, everyone.